Milowonbue.
Mboka?
Trustee Milonge.
Here.
Oh, I thought I saw you.
Trustee Emig.
Okay, all we needed was here. E.C.
Trustee Emig.
Here.
Trustee Painter.
Here.
Trustee Correo.
Here.
Trustee Black.
Here.
Trustee Crable.
Here.
Trustee Bray.
Here.
Trustee Runner.
Yes, here. Thank you so much. At this point, we move to our consent agenda. Are there any items from the consent agenda that any trustee would like to have removed for separate consideration? I don't see any hands up, but as I'm looking at the participant list, is there a motion?
I'll make that motion to approve us.
By trust, I'm sorry, to prove his percentage, is that right? Donna, I'm sorry.
Yes, yes.
Is there a second to that motion by trustee Bowlin? Is that, okay, I see the victory sign that Churchill and Nixon and trustee Mathie has now raised, so I assume that's a second. Madam Court, could you please call the roll?
Yes, thank you. Trustee Mathie.
Yes.
Trustee Bowlin.
Yes.
Trustee Milowonbue.
Yes.
Trustee Emig.
Yes.
Trustee Painter.
Yes.
Trustee Correo.
Yes.
Trustee Black.
Yes.
Trustee Crable.
Yes.
Trustee Bray.
Yes.
Trustee Runner.
Yes, thank you very much. We move next to a draft budget amendment. This is a town fund for fiscal year 2021. The recommendation is that the draft budget amendment be accepted and placed on file for 30-day review period. This should be a voice vote. Can we start out with a motion and then possible discussion afterwards? Is there a motion and a second?
Deb on the line?
Pardon me?
Is Deb on the line?
Deb, are you there?
She is. She's on the line.
Deb, can you hear us?
Oh.
Oh, okay.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so first of all, I want, I want.
Oh, but before you do, I just asked for a motion in a second, and then we may have questions that follow that. But is there a motion and a second to the draft budget amendment for 2021 moved by councilmember Crable? I see that. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by councilmember, excuse me, trustee Painter, I apologize. And before we take a vote, Deb, you had some comments you wanted to make?
I do, yes. First, I want to say that Steve is probably not here. His mother passed away yesterday, and so I know that he's back in Dwight where he lives, so, okay?
Thank you.
So if you have any questions about the assessment stuff, he can deal with that by email. Return. The other thing that I want to do is, I wanted to bring up the questions that Billy Tyus had sent, and maybe read those first, and maybe that will dispel some of the questions, if that's okay?
That's wonderful. Go ahead.
Okay, and then one from Alderman, I mean trustee Mathie as well. Okay, so the first question is, according to the statement of funds we provided, the amended budget appears that there's a $1.8 million in the general town fund, and at the end of April it was, and then budgeting to have 1.4 at the end of the fiscal year. That is true. The approved budget that was approved on, in December 2019, sorry, March 2020, no. The 2020 approved budget was projected on, okay, anyway, that amended budget uses the actual beginning, the, you could, uses the forecasted budget, and then when this, we put out this amended budget, it uses the actual beginning balance, beginning balance and budget information. Okay? So.
Just, just, just to clarify, I mean, so, obviously, all budgets are projections, and that's pretty much what you're saying?
Yep. Well, as this amended budget is happening, we're using actuals. On the page.
Beginning balance.
The beginning balance, sorry. Beginning balance is actual, actual for the amended budget. It was projected for the original approved budget. So there are some differences there because now we have actuals versus projected, okay? So that's why it's 1.4 now. And then he asked if the, does that represent just more than nine months of expenses in the current balance and 7.5 in the expenses at the year, end of year, and yes, that is true. Okay?
Okay, I think, we may have questions at the end, but go ahead, keep going.
All right, that's fine. And then we were putting in $100,000 allocated from the general town fund to put into a community emergency response program, and $200,000 to transfer from general town to the general assistance fund. And how would the community, okay, then on that.
I'm sorry, Deb, can you say that one more time? I just wanted to follow that. You said 200K, is that, did I hear that right?
Yes, $100,000 into an emergency fund that would go in the general town fund, and then a $200,000 potential transfer from the general town fund to the general assistance program to help with our general assistance needs. Then the question was, how, how would the emergency response program work in the general town fund? Well, we don't know that yet. What, what is going, what, what is happening here is the township is providing, with this amended budget, providing a line item on the amended budget so that when the time comes, or if it's needed, in, with unforeseen emerging needs that aren't being accounted for, we can react to it much quicker. So we're putting this in place so that we can develop a program.
I have a question, if I may.
Yeah, of course.
So, so this 200,000 is coming from your reserves?
Yes.
Okay.
Because we have to provide, we have to provide general assistance. It's mandatory.
Right, I understand that. Thank you.
Yeah, so we're just positioning for that if we need it as well.
Good, thank you.
Okay, all right. And then there's another question that, could the town board allocate more for the general town fund, meaning the community emergency response program, and that is a positive, yes, affirmative?
I'm sorry, can we?
Trustee Correo.
Now, can we just go back a minute? I think you had said that we're, we're positioning, but we're not totally sure how the community emergency response program would work.
That's correct. Yes, that's correct. We're not yet.
So we're, so we're basically saying we'd put that money in place, but you don't have a fleshed-out plan yet for what we'd actually end up doing with the money. Are you able to tell us whether the eligibility requirements would be less restrictive than what is currently the case for the general assistance fund? And do we know what those would be?
A second. The parameters can be set in the future. We don't have those parameters yet. They would be less restricted if you want them to be restricted, but at this time, there are no emerging needs based on what's been going on with the coalition and the coordinated entry and uniform process that we're working on. And that, those needs are being worked on. And, and as part of that plan, it's, we're to use federal dollars first, state dollars next, and then local as a last resort. Local, local funds are very difficult, you know, to, to come by because they're property tax-based, and at township, it grows very slowly in that regard. So any funds that we would put in this would have to be really, it'd be, have to be thought out pretty carefully how we're going to, what are the emerging first?
Right. Yeah. Sorry, Jeff, let me, let me, can I finish just clarifying?
Please, go ahead.
Sure.
Yeah, so I, so one of the pieces, so, so are there any eligibility requirements that we have to impose with this money? And I am in part asking because one of the questions that has come up over and over again is, the thinking is that a lot of people, you know, students and undocumented folks and so on, were left out of a lot of the federal programs that were implemented. There are some question marks around whether they're included in the state programs, but possibly a local program is something where we could determine that they are eligible. So I am asking whether that would be a possibility or whether they would be disqualified from that.
And, and if, I could follow up on trustee Correo's point is, and if we were to change that, what do we need to do to change that in order to have undocumented folks as well as students not slip through the cracks?
Yes, I do not have answers for that yet. We are researching the statutes regarding that. And then those programs, that program would have to be defined possibly by your, with your help and your input on that.
Sure, sure, I totally get that.
Hold on, I think what we need to do is wait for the coalition to come out on May 29th in terms of how we're looking at all of the needs and filling all of the gaps that are existing at this time in our community.
Deb, I guess to clarify, I'm saying pretending as though the coalition is not a factor in this. If, if the only player existing was the township, and we said, we want the township to play a role in distributing assistance to our residents, up to and including undocumented residents, is there something that by law stops us from doing that, and what would we have to do to change it? So I'm saying.
I do have our attorney, I do have our attorney, John Redling Schaefer on hand. John, are you there?
I am. Good evening.
Hi. Hi.
So I, Deb, you want me?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we do have a question.
We have a question.
Yeah, absolutely. So thank you all for allowing me the chance to attend tonight. The, the question is absolutely on point. What do we need to do? We need to develop guidelines. As far as the, I guess, the positive of using the town fund versus the general assistance fund, we have a little more leeway in terms of creating guidelines. For example, on the general assistance, if we were to use general assistance funds, we would be bound to the terms and conditions of the public aid code that have specific restrictions related to the categories of individuals you were just discussing. On the town fund side, we're actually governed by more generalized concepts of health, need, public services, well-being, as long as they are, you know, residents of the township. What those specific tasks are, you know, I defer to what Deb and you all as the policymakers make, but in this instance, by having funds come out of the town fund, I think we are using less restricted funds than if we were, you know, guided by the public aid code and general assistance fund.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Other questions there? I don't, oh, councilmember, excuse me, trustee Crable.
Just, I just wanted to make sure to clarify that Deb, you know, creating the guidelines for this community emergence response fund in part will be based on what the recommendations that we expect from the United Way Coalition coming out Friday. Is that accurate?
We don't want to duplicate the services that are already being provided. We can enhance if they run out, and my suggestion is we be the payer of last resort with that from a local level, and then. Pardon me?
Oh, go ahead, Deb, I'm sorry. Please finish.
I just believe that's fiscally very responsible to the taxpayers to, you know, use existing funds from other sources and then work our way down to local.
And I know that the recommendations are coming out, coming out Friday, but you shared a little bit with the, on the United Way virtual call on Saturday. Would you mind sharing that with, with us, what, what you told that group about, about this coalition?
Sure, the primary goal, obviously, is to fill the gaps in need, and that's being worked through this coalition of many different organizations. We do have, and put in place, a coordinated entry, meaning anybody who's needing the assistance for housing or utilities can go to one source to figure out where to go from there. So that source will be 2-1-1, and then 2-1-1 based on guidelines will direct to the right location. The one uniform application that's been put in place and accepted by the leading agencies are, I mean, that will be used by each one, so an applicant does not have to fill out more than one application for the different sources of funding. And then we can also, will have the ability through a release signature to be able to forward, if we can't handle the funding for a particular applicant, we can move that applicant to the next agency with all of the information in hand. So it just makes it so much easier for the client to get the services they need.
Great, thanks, Deb.
But also, if, if we've got people that potentially, as trustee Correo has suggested, are slipping through the cracks, that's up to us as trustees to make policy to try to ensure that that does not happen. Is that correct?
I believe that's true, but there are other sources that are available at this point, and that will be explained, I believe, at the press conference.
The other, so, the, the other sources are going to be explained on Friday?
Yes, I believe all of it will be disclosed.
Okay, is, if, if somebody wanted to find out, if they're listening this evening, if they wanted to find out, can they go to your website, or can, how do they get that information? Because obviously, some people have been hurting for several months. Rather, do they have to wait till Friday?
Yeah, right now, right now, no, I mean, they can come to township for assistance to see if they qualify, and then we can refer them on.
Okay.
Where they need to go. But all of the information will be projected on Friday and, or disclosed on Friday, and it will be, all the information should be going up on each of the different websites for the actual principal fillable form.
Okay, I see. Okay. Other question? I'm, oh, let's see, I have, excuse me, trustee Mathie and then Black.
Thank you. So, you know, Deb, you and I talked earlier today, and in, in that conversation, I, I guess I had what might have been some of the same confusion that I'm hearing from other trustees, that I was expecting to see a plan brought forward, and you can, what we talked about, what you explained to me, to put it succinctly, is tonight is lining up the funds to be available because of the waiting period for public hearing for amending the budget, which basically gives us a month to see what the coalition releases, see if there's any gaps or any areas that were left uncovered, and then create that program so that once the amended budget has been approved, which theoretically is June the 29th, then we can actually release the program. So we couldn't spend the money right now if we wanted to anyway. We've got a month to build this program based on what the needs are in the community. Does, is, is that sum up pretty much what you're saying?
Yes, I believe that, thank you. You did a very nice job in making that succinct. I do believe that that is the best-case scenario, that we would be able to determine emerging needs in a month. I do, however, think it will be longer than that because we still, remember, have unemployment for most people, and, and that will go on through the end of the year. And so those emerging needs start happening mostly when there are eviction notices, disconnects, you know, I know that food insecurity is something that's being worked on already in our community, and, and there may be some other emerging needs at that point that we, but my guess is it's going to be a little longer than a month.
So then the only real topic that we can address tonight is how much money we put into that fund. We have a proposal to put $200,000 in there, but, and I know you didn't get to it yet, but one of my questions was, could we put more in there, and how much do we need to keep in reserve if we were to say we want a four-month or a six-month emergency, you know, operations fund? You know, what do those numbers look like? Could we free up more than $200,000 to put in there? That's really about the only topic we can actually solve tonight, is how much.
I believe.
Put in there.
Okay, for a four-month, for a four-month amended budget, we'd, we'd have, we'd have at a minimum 774,000 that would have to be in the, in the account. Now, remember, we do have postponements and property taxes in terms of distribution potentially because of the delays there, so four months, oh, next year, you're right. Yeah, so, I mean, we, we do want to, you know, keep that into consideration. I, I feel more comfortable with five or six months. I don't have the number for six months on that. Just take the 774 divided by four and take a time six.
35,000 a month?
Yeah.
So, okay, so that's, that's the only, other than that, though, we, we, we still have time to craft a program to figure out what it looks like, and we've got a month before we could actually do anything. But right now, it's just a conversation we need to have. How much money do we want to put in this emergency needs township, general township fund talking about?
That's correct. And remember that, that the amount that we presented here tonight could be, could be added to later. We feel comfortable with the 200,000 going into the GA because that's what we can do. And I did want to tell you that Peoria, Peoria is doing a one-time COVID out of the GA fund, not GT fund. So they're using GA assistance, but see, somebody would have to qualify for that through the GA fund, you know, like emergency assistance or general assistance.
That's the more restrictive one we've been talking about. That's a lot.
The more restricted one, that's correct. That's correct. That's right.
Thank you.
Okay, I have a council, excuse me, trustee Black and then trustee Bowlin. We still have hands up. Is that correct? Scott?
And, and you get Ron to stop by. Sorry about this. Hey, Ron. So I, I guess I'm more looking for, yeah, right, he's just, he wants to be on TV. Yeah, I'm, I'm more going to comment, and thanks, Deb, for going through all that. And one of the challenges that we face here is that we've got a lot of people who are, we're not operating with all of the same facts on kind of the same timeline and the same understanding as to how all of this works. And so I guess, for simplicity, I'll just share where I'm at as, as a policymaker for, for the township. I, you know, you know, we can argue about five, six, seven months of reserves. Frankly, I'm comfortable with four, and we can take it from there. You know, we can do, four months is fine for me. I guess what I'm looking for is the fleshed-out specifics of a program, and then we can insert in what the need is as appropriate. So we're not arguing about what the specifics are at the time the needs are the greatest because it's going to come up on us very quickly, and the needs are going to change. To me, township money has been allocated through the taxpayers, the process that is for assistance. So to me, it makes the most sense to use that money for assistance in this unprecedented times. And, and, and in my view, if we need to come back to the table with additional funding because we've depleted sources, that's absolutely a conversation I'm comfortable having, just because structurally, township is the best way to do, do the aid. So, you know, we've, we've talked about some very high-level pieces around the specifics of a program, but I, I, I need to see the nitty-gritty, and this is kind of an email that, that we had sent, at least I know, I sent a note in March trying to get these specifics filled out. And, and, and in my view, we're a little bit behind the eight ball. And so I don't know what I need to do to help expedite that process, but I stand ready and willing to, to weigh in on the specifics of all this stuff. So if United Way comes out with a recommendation, that's great. We can follow that or any other coalition. But, I mean, I don't want to be debating, you know, number of dollars, names of funds, application processes, if the need is imminent, which we can all agree at some point it will be. So I guess, it's not really a question per se, but I, you know, I'll help in whatever way I can to help expedite this because I think we are, we're a little bit behind at this point.
If, if I could, I'm just going to insert a couple of comments before I move to trustee Bowlin. I absolutely, totally, unequivocally agree with trustee Black. You know, I, I think we're in a situation where if we're not on the precipice of, of needing, we're, we're damn close, and I, I think it's nice to keep money in reserve, but there's a reason why you need it in reserve. If we've ever needed money in reserve, it's a time where people are suffering, and I think that's the case right now. At this point, trustee Bowlin.
Um, okay.
Can I make a comment first?
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
So we do have a plan. We are working with the coalition to make sure those gaps are being filled. We are, we do have a plan in place to do this amended budget to set us up for additional funding. So I, I do think that we aren't, I don't think we're behind the eight ball, like you're saying. I think we're planning for the future, and that is not, yeah, it, it's not, it's not something that can be finalized just yet.
And I, and I hear you, but when we're, we're having questions about what can we legally do and how do we legally maneuver these funds, that, that's what we need to have sorted out. And then that's kind of where, I don't, I don't know if you need us to vote on a resolution to do that. I, I think everybody here would agree that we want to have those, those kind of basic questions answered, and then we can plug and chug the need and the fund as appropriate as they develop.
Okay, thank you. Trustee Bowlin, and then now I see trustee Emig. So start with trustee Bowlin.
Yeah, I have said pretty much all along that we should keep the reserves at a very minimum so that there's enough money accessible for those in need. However, I think we do need to balance that against the property tax delay, and we can always come back once we have a policy in place to re-amend the budget as the need expands going forward. I think that we do need to be flexible, but within the confines of a policy statement, if that makes any sense.
Makes perfect sense to me.
Okay.
Can I ask John, John, the attorney, John Redling Schaefer, could, would you have a comment on that?
Go ahead.
On, on which part?
A policy to be put in place, a policy to be put in place for that?
On reserves, yeah. The policymakers can certainly do that. They have the, you know, the power to, you know, the power of the purse and, and the power of the budgetary concerns and considerations. If there is a plan to put something formal in place, yeah, I think that should be done in close consultation in addition to, you know, all of you, but also through, you know, certainly the supervisor's office, the assessor's office, the cemetery would have to be involved, and then also, you know, while the, the lawyer can be consulted, certainly, you know, certainly the auditor too, because they're going to have a, a pretty good understanding of, of the workings too. So if you're asking me if, if a policy can be developed, absolutely is the answer.
Councilmember Bowlin, excuse me, trustee Bowlin, does that answer your question?
Oh, yeah. Well, it was, it was my recommendation to have an overarching policy. So, yes, he answered the question. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I still have trustee Emig.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Deb, for providing more specifics and information about, about this. I have two questions. The first is, would it be fair to say that part of the work of the Shelter Plus Coalition is to come up with some uniform set of guidelines and recommendations? In other words, do you anticipate that criteria for getting access to these funds might be somewhat uniform, you know, after, after we hear about the details from the 29th? And, and the second question is, if we do have, if we move, say, 200,000 to general assistance, why wouldn't we make more funds available in that, in that line now with the understanding that we may not need to access them all? In other words, would it be easier to allocate potentially more that could be needed, given the unforeseen? given the unforeseen situation that, that everybody is in? And go through the process of making sure the budget has, has been vetted and approved for up to X instead of just limiting it at, at 200,000? I hope that all is a.
Makes sense to me, trustee Emig.
Okay, thank you.
It does, it does make sense. It does make sense to do that. Based on a study from the recession in 2008, it took four years before we could re- in the GA fund, before the GA fund recovered from the crash. So we're anticipating a four-year timeframe as well for.
Clarify, what, what you mean by recovered is that you got then, or, or not you, but the fund got back to where it had been prior to the, the dip? Well, dip is putting it short of the, but to the problems of 08 or so?
Yes, well, we looked at the emergency assistance, rent and utilities in general assistance. And we tracked that out from the crash in 2008 for four years. And it took four years to recover from that to where our numbers were more leveled out.
Okay, uh, let's see.
It was two.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Hang on. We recommended the 200,000 transfer based on the highest usage of those years.
Okay, alrighty. I, I, one more trust, oh, oh, I'm sorry, trustee Emig, did you have a follow-up?
Well, so it, it's, so you're, I see. So you're basing that 200,000 on past, what, what was needed in the past? And I, I, oh.
But that doesn't mean that more couldn't be moved over, you know, and that could be just board approval at any point.
Okay.
You know, this is, this is considering our assets and income and payment levels being the same.
Right, right. Thank you. And the, the first, the first question, and I know that, that all of the details are yet to be released. But in, in the, the work of the coalition, do you anticipate that some of these boundaries, restrictions, legalities will be uniform? That there will be a shared process or?
The process has different guidelines in that different funding sources create the restriction.
Of course.
But the uniformity comes in what we need to see as terms of supportive documentation. We have the same application for all, you know, we're, we're using those guidelines.
Okay.
For the, for the, for those who do not have social security numbers, it's a little different with that.
Okay.
Thank you. And we still have, excuse me, trustee, I'll get it straight by the time this meeting's over, rather than council member, trustee Milowamway, you have a question or comment?
Well, I, I do, but I, I, I know that there are several who raised their hand before I did, like trustee Bray, trustee Cravill.
No, 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 you're, you're, I have other people who have already spoken. You have not spoken yet.
Okay, well, trustee Bray hasn't spoken either.
I don't.
I just wanted to be respectful of that. Okay, all right. I'll, I'll just, I'll just go ahead. So first of all, I, I, I want to make sure that we are able to, to provide for as many people as possible. And as we were talking about adding more funds, I, what I'm thinking is that, and I, it's kind of a question for Deb, you know, how quickly do you think those $200,000 would be depleted based on past experience? And if we, if we see, let's say, that 50,000 of it gets utilized already, I mean, we, I, I, I would assume that we do have a little bit of time to, to even put together a special, special meeting, you know, for us to be able to address the need for additional funding. Would that be correct?
The 200 that we had put in there, we're forecasting for this year, for this fiscal year. And then we would need to increase the levy for the next year following.
And, and if, if we need more, just trustee Milowamway, I, I can call in 48 hours.
Right, okay. All right. That's, that's good to know. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And did, did, I have a couple of, of trustees who have already spoken. Is there anybody who has not spoken? Trustee Bray, did you have a, your hand up? I don't see it.
Can you hear me?
Trustee Bray, yeah, did you have a question?
Yes, I do. Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you. I, I didn't see your hand up. I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Supervisor, Township Supervisor. Appreciate your projections here tonight and, and bringing this amendment forward. Like my trustee colleagues, I, I'd like to see us provide for the, as many people as possible in need and follow good practices in that regard. And, and your diligence and aligning your work with the coalition and looking forward and, you know, hearing what the coalition has to say this week. I, I look forward to your impressions and, and hearing your thoughts and recommendations in that regard. And I'll just say as well, I look forward to talking to my trustee colleagues to come up with what, what could be our philosophy that could inform a, a program at this unusual time. So going to process here, I think I heard trustee Milowamway perhaps recommend a special meeting to, to sort out some of that? Or had you, did you have a thi- a thought about how we would, I guess, from a process standpoint, a, address that, that kind of that consensus meeting or discussion that we need to have to build, to build consensus around our philosophy and our, our kind of guidance?
Are you talking about a special meeting or a work session? I'm not understanding that exactly, but thank you for your comment.
Yeah, yeah. So thank you for that. Thank you for that. So, yeah, my question is just process. What process do you see us following now to, to gain consensus around what our program would look like? What, are you expecting to call a special meeting or do you want to have work sessions? Just, you know, trying to get a heads up here on what's next, next step?
I believe that, okay, so our next step, first of all, is the amended budget approval. Then next, I think we look at what the coalition has come up with and then address following that. Uh, work, I, I welcome a work session in that it would bring us together to discuss more some of the details of where we're at. But until we receive, until we open up, until the coalition opens up the intent of what the programming is about, then I think that we're still kind of in the dark. I'm not, I'm not, but I'm under confidentiality to make sure that, you know, we're, and, you know, we're following that guideline. I think they want uniformity in terms of the reach to the public at the same time. And so I understand where they're coming from on that. But it has caused a little bit of hardship and a little bit of quietness on my part because, you know, we're supposed to keep some of that quiet until the press release. So I believe that a lot of the questions will be answered immediately once the press release is out there and once we're open to the public. And then we can discuss having a work session and talking further if you'd like. At that point, I can reach out to all of you and see what, if you have any questions after that press release and we can go from there.
Thank you. Thank you, Supervisor. That answered my question.
Great. Thank you very much. Uh, do, am I correct? Do I still have, at this point, everybody that I see has spoken? Trustee Carillo, did you have a follow-up? Oh, I have trustee Matthew, excuse me. Trustee Matthew, you, you have not spoken yet. I'm sorry. I apologize.
Mayor, I've already spoken once. I just raised my hand. So go to Jen or Jeff first and then I'll come back to me.
Okay, Jen, Jen, I'm sorry.
Um, yeah, sorry, I blew my chance on the stack by asking a question too early. So I just wanna share a, a couple of comments and, and frankly, just some of my concerns from, from some of the things that I'm hearing today. It does feel to me a little bit like a backwards process. So as you know, I have been a big advocate for public aid and direct assistance to our residents. So I'm a big fan of that conceptually, but this really does feel like we are being asked, like, I feel frankly uncomfortable with being asked to put up money for a plan that I have not been privy to. And I totally understand the necessity for keeping some things under wraps and timing them right to be released to the public. But I don't necessarily understand the reasoning for why we as trustees were not kept in the loop. That seems very, you know, counterintuitive, especially given that this was a meeting where we were expected to vote on whether we wanted to put up some money. Like, seemed like it would have been a good idea for us to be in the loop on what we were putting up the money for. If indeed there is a plan, I, I would hope that we would have been figured into that equation. And perhaps that we would have something to contribute to that plan as well. It is a little bit frustrating frankly to hear that, you know, folks are sitting in coalition and I'm sure those folks have a lot of great ideas, but, you know, we, we are up here also because we know the communities we come from and, and I would argue have important things to contribute to what those guidelines should be and what those programs should look like.
Okay.
May I, may I finish and then, and then you, you have a chance to answer.
Trustee Carillo, finish, please.
So, uh, so I think, you know, I totally understand that the coalition is important and it's important for us to know how to follow. But I think it's also important for us to lead. So I, I hate the feeling that we're waiting around for something else to happen or for somebody else to, to let us go, especially when, when the urgency is so felt in our community. So I guess I, this whole, I, I, I guess my, the main concern that I wanna express is this sense that, like, I've, I've heard you say several times, Supervisor, that there isn't an emerging need. And I understand that, like, from the very narrow position of emergency assistance, that there may not be emergent need as defined by that. But when people here, our township supervisors, say that there is no emergent need, I don't think that inspires a lot of confidence that we are set up to help them and that we are taking their suffering seriously in this moment. And, and I guess the last thing I wanna share with trustees and, and with you, Supervisor, I really respect your work and I, but I think in this moment, the risk of duplicating services is frankly much less than the risk of not having enough resources out there for people whose livelihoods are, and whose lives are on the line. So in this case, if we spent all that money that is being proposed to be allocated, we'd be out 100,000 bucks. And that's, that's the worst case scenario. But the worst case scenario, if we're waiting around because we're so worried about clearly defining the need and having all the data and making sure everybody agrees on it instead of being more concerned with being expeditious and getting that money in people's hands, I think that the price to pay is much higher. So, um, so just, so just wanted to point that out. I guess the last, the last thing I'll say indirectly to this agenda item is, is I agree with trustee Black that I, I feel comfortable with four months, but also agree with trustee Bowlin that we, you know, this is fine for us to revisit. And then I guess I'll close with a question, which is why the distribution in favor of the general assistance, which is more restrictive than the fund, which is less restrictive? Because it, it feels like it would be easier to move money from the less restrictive fund to the more restrictive fund, but not the other way. So just curious why we landed on those amounts and why we distribute them, why you're proposing that they get distributed the way that they do?
But, okay, the general assistance fund is a mandatory fund. If we run out of money, we go into receivership with the government with that. So we're moving money there to protect that money for potential use by more general assistance, emergency assistance. It won't be moved unless it's needed. And the same for the community emergency program, emergency fund program. That money that we put in there isn't really, it, it could be $10 right now. All we're doing is setting up the line item. It can be whatever you want it to be. We're just, we're just setting it up for the potential use of it. At this point, the 100,000 was just the number we put in there, but it, we're not going to spend that until something's defined for it. And so that money was just positioning us for that line item for the budget.
I get that. You do understand what I'm saying, though, that it, that for me, it made more sense for it to go the other way around, but we are where we are and it is what it is.
At this point, then, thank you, trustee Carillo. If we could go to trustee Matthew, everybody is now on a second run and we're, our, our time is running short, just reminding everyone. Trustee Matthew and then Cravill and Black. And then we're gonna have to stop.
So, uh, thank you, Mayor. My quick question is a little bit more processed, and this is probably for the attorney. Right now, the community emergency response line, $100,000 was put into that line. If at some point, let's say, for instance, we needed to move more money into that line item to use for community emergency response, do we have to do another amended budget and another 30-day waiting period for that amended budget in order to put money in there?
Great question. What Deb has said is, is exactly right. We start the process to create the line item. During this next 30 days, while the budget is out there for inspection and review, nothing precludes the board from the night of the adoption of the budget from amending the budget if we see there's a need. So there can actually be a motion to amend at the time it's being passed as long as we, you know, obviously fulfill the notice requirements. So if we do sense an, and a, a higher need, that number can actually be amended the night that the budget as amended and presented is approved, if we have to. The most important thing we are doing is creating the line item to authorize the appropriation, the expenditure from that line item.
Okay, perfect. That's what I thought was happening and I just wanted to make sure that we got clarity on that, that as we spend the next 30 days developing what the program looks like, then we can amend it and narrow it in and vote for it all at that last, on that last meeting when we approve it.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Trustee Cravill and then Black.
Thank you, Mayor, and, and thanks, Deb. I just wanted to clarify a few things and ask a couple more questions. So it's my understanding from talking with you that through what your township is doing and normal township and the other organization providing assistance, like MCCA and that current needs are, are being met. Is, is that accurate?
All of the different poverty level guidelines are being addressed, including those that are undocumented. And we are currently serving those populations as a neighborhood.
And, and then secondly, you do anticipate at some point, you expect that once these moratoriums end and the things like that and unemployment, that there will be needs, whether that's housing, childcare, food, you know, those types of things. Is that right?
Absolutely. Agreed.
Okay, and then for the two, for the general assistance fund and the emergency assistance that's, that's part of that, you, depending on the situation or how things unfold, you could change the asset and income requirements to allow more aid to be provided to people, more people to be eligible for that aid. Is that correct?
It can be adjusted.
Okay. And then, so, and, and this is, you know, as a final question, with regard, you know, one of the other things we're gonna be discussing tonight is, is the use of community development block grant funds. From the township's perspective, if you were to be asked if, if the township can handle administering those funds, how would you answer that?
I would answer it as, yes, we are very equipped to handle that based on our software and the knowledge and expertise of our caseworkers. Township would perform the work for free of charge in terms of the administration of that. And city would establish the parameters based on the guidelines of the federal funds.
Thanks, Deb. That's all I have.
Councilor, trustee Black, and you got the last question because we're gonna have to end on this.
Oh, boy, yeah. Thanks again, Deb. I, I appreciate it. And again, I, I know that everybody I've talked to wants to see. Oh, boy. Yeah. Um, thanks again, Deb. I appreciate it. And again, I, I know that, uh, everybody I've talked to wants to see us, wants to see nobody get through this crisis, you know, hurt financially or anything else. And so it doesn't matter how we get there. And I kind of want to build off of Kim's questions around process. Um, and, and I'll just share what I think is that if you want to, if we need a work session to work some of these things out, I will do that. Um, I, I just, my fear is that just by virtue of how the law is structured now, we have to give a 30 day window for budget amendments and stuff. Um, I, I want to make sure that we are creating clear line of sight for people so that people aren't being misinformed about what is and what is not available. Um, I don't want to be debating a month from now how this program could function if the needs pile up at that point in time. Uh, best case scenario is that this, a, additional funding goes unused because the community recovers quickly, which I think there's a lot of evidence that that might happen, uh, but I want to be prepared otherwise. So I, I guess what, what I'm getting at is that in, in, I, I want to share just theme here so we can start consenting around something that just at a really high level. Um, I want the least restrictive funding in place. I want to see what, what the application process looks like. Um, who is eligible, who is not eligible? Um, and, and I would want to see the, the, the amount of funding available in that very flexible program uh, to be as much as possible and, and the four month reserve is the number that, that I've come to. And that's basically double what the city has, uh, available and is, is aligned with a lot of the other, um, organizations that, that we work with. So uh, if, if a work session satisfies that conversation and helps give the guidance, I'll sign on to that. Um, I, I just, I, I, I fear that just by the way that the laws are structured, that we're going to have to delay and it's going to, we're going to be on some timetable that's not aligned to a crisis if it unfolds rapidly. So, um, I guess Deb, is that kind of what you're, is that what you're hearing from this group that, that we want to talk through that? Or, or what is it you're hearing from us?
I don't think I need to talk through it. I understand what you're saying and I agree. That's fine. We can, we can work through, I, I believe we can work through and see if there's some things that we can accomplish. I agree with you, the less restrictions, restrictions, the better. Um, if I have the support of the board to do those things, that's great. I, I think that's, uh, admirable for you to take that on and for us to serve as many people as we can.
So let's start.
Wrap up, trustee Carrio, I, I was, I had pretty much said nobody else could speak, but you have something very quick.
It's just a question. So, uh, trustee Black, are you proposing that that amount be different than what is on the agenda tonight so that we amend the amount that is being proposed tonight?
If I understand what John was saying earlier is that what we put on tonight can be amended in the final budget discussion. So we don't have to make any changes.
Like that doesn't reset the clock and put us back at the 30 days.
That's what I'm hearing. So to me, it's a placeholder.
And then once we're there, we can do a, a 40 hour meeting. If we need, it's, it's just, we, we've got these next 30 days that are the pain in the lower extremity. Yeah, I think sometimes be reformable.
I think what I'd like to do, this is Deb again, I think what I'd like to do is I will reach out to you, um, as, as in the next couple of weeks, just to make sure that, you know, if I'm seeing anything happening right now in where we're at, then I'll just address those things with you in an email or something. Just keep you informed.
Please do so. And at this point, um, we're going to move away, uh, uh, and, and to act, an actual vote on the motion that we've been discussing for well over half an hour. Uh, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll on the draft budget amendment, uh, for the town fund for fiscal year 2021?
Yes. And just as a reminder, we had a, uh, first by trustee Crable and a second by trustee Painter.
Thank you.
Trustee Matthew?
Yes.
Trustee Boland?
Yes.
Trustee Milawambay?
Yes.
Trustee Imig?
Yes.
Trustee Painter?
Yes.
Trustee Carrio?
Yes.
Trustee Black?
Yes.
Trustee Crable?
Yes.
Trustee Bray?
Yes.
Trustee Runner?
Yes. Thank you very much. And at this point, Deb, uh, since we don't have Steve here under reports by elected officials, do you have anything else to add for us this evening?
I do not. Just keep him in your prayer.
Okay, thank you. Is there any public comment, Madam Clerk, on trustee, excuse me, on Township Matters?
There is not.
Is there a motion to adjourn? I, I, I see a, a, a wave by trustee Milawambay, second by trustee Carrio. Um, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any, any?
Aye.
Nobody's opposed. Okay. I'll see you in four minutes. Thank you. Can everybody hear me? Okay. We're going to go ahead and call the meeting of the city council to order. And, uh, we're going to start with the pledge of allegiance. And I'll go ahead and lead that and then we'll have a moment of silence. Oh, Donna, thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And thank you, council member Boland. Um, at this point, if we could just have a moment of silence, thank you. Thank you. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Matthew?
Present.
Councilmember Boland?
Here.
Councilmember Milawambay?
Here.
Councilmember Imig?
Present.
Councilmember Carrio?
Here.
Councilmember Black?
Here.
Councilmember Crable?
Here and present.
Councilmember Bray?
Here.
Mayor Runner?
Here. I'm here too.
Oh, councilmember Painter! Are you here?
My apologies.
That's okay.
We're here. Uh, we start out with a proclamation, which I realized, and this is egg on my face, I do not have a copy of. Uh, and with this is, it's not requiring a motion, just a recognition. Madam Clerk, do you have a copy of that that you could read for us? Which I normally do. I apologize.
I do. Sorry.
I know I signed it and I know it's there. I just don't have it here with me. Roll, roll.
All right, let me get right to it. Excuse me. All right. Proclamation is National Gun Violence Awareness Day, June 5th, 2020. Whereas every day, more than a hundred Americans are killed by gun violence. And on average, there are more than 13,000 gun homicides every year. And whereas Americans are 25 times more likely to die by gun homicides than people in other high income countries. And whereas Illinois has an average of 1,363 gun deaths every year with a rate of 10.6 deaths per 100,000 people. Illinois has the 37th highest rate of gun deaths in the U.S. And whereas gun homicides predominantly occur in cities with more than half of all firearm related, related gun deaths in the nation occurring in 127 cities. And whereas cities across the nation, including Bloomington, are working to end the senseless violence with evidence-based solutions. And whereas protecting, public, protecting, sorry, public safety in the communities they serve is mayor's highest responsibility. And whereas support for the second amendment rights of law-abiding citizens go hand in hand with keeping guns away from people with dangerous histories. And whereas mayors and law enforcement officers know their communities best, are the most familiar with local criminal activity and how to address it, and are best positioned to understand how to keep their citizens safe. And whereas the pandemic facing America has drastically impacted communities and individuals sheltering in place, which may result in situations where access to firearms results in increased risk to intimate partner violence, gun deaths, suicide by gun and unintentional shootings. And whereas in January 2013, Hadiya Pendleton, a teenager who marched in the presidential inaugural parade and was tragically shot and killed just weeks later, should be now celebrating her 23rd birthday. And whereas to help honor Hadiya, the, and more than a hundred Americans who li, whose lives are cut short every day and the council's survivors who are injured by shootings every day, a national coalition of organizations has designated June 5th, 2020, the first Friday in June, as the sixth National Gun Violence Awareness Day. And whereas the idea was inspired by a group of hideous friends who asked their classmates to commemorate her life by wearing orange. They chose this color because hunters wear orange to announce themselves to other hunters when out in the woods and orange is a color that symbolizes the value of human life. And whereas anyone can join the campaign by pledging to wear orange on June 5th, the first Friday in June in 2020 to help raise awareness about gun violence. And whereas by wearing orange on June 5th, 2020, Americans will raise awareness about gun violence and honor the lives of gun violence victims and survivors. And whereas we renew our commitment to reduce gun violence and pledge to do all we can to keep firearms out of the wrong hands and encourage responsible gun ownership to help keep our children's life safe. Now therefore be it resolved that Terry Runner, mayor of the city of Bloomington, declares the first Friday in June, June 5th, 2020, to be National Gun Violence Awareness Day. He encourages all citizens to support their local community's efforts to prevent the tragic effects of gun violence and to honor and value human life.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. I appreciate that. Do we have public comment? We have anyone on the phone?
Um, we actually did not have anyone register to call in for public comment. Um, however, we did have 13 people email public comment that has already been shared with council. And if I could read those names?
Please. Thank you.
Rachel Shively, Matt Tosco, Kelsey Harms, Radiance Campbell, Sunny Garcia, Aaron Stein, Joyce Kay, Kate Brunk, Peter Kramer, Christopher Haynes, Carolyn Bartolone, Derek Lowe, and Eddie Brightfire.
Thank you very much, Madam Clerk. We move to the consent agenda. Are there any items that any member of the council would like to have removed for separate consideration?
Mayor?
Yes. I can't hear you. Scott?
Can you hear me now?
Yeah. Uh, I'm losing you again for some reason.
It's because I'm clicking it on my PDF. Uh, 8H, please.
8H as in Herman the Munster, right?
Yes.
Okay. Any other items to remove? I don't see any council hands. Okay. Uh, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented with the exception of item 8H as in Herman the Munster? Moved by council member, uh, Bray, uh, who might very well remember Herman the Munster. Is there a second? I'm, I'm, don't laugh, councilman.
I know Herman Munster.
Oh, you, you do? Okay. Well, I mean, she and I are, are probably closer to the same age than you and I because, you know, you were diapers until a few weeks ago, right? Uh, I'm sorry. That was me. Um, is there a second to that motion? Second by, I, I, uh, uh, an arm by councilmember Imig. I'm going to take that as a second. Uh, Madam Clerk, would you call the roll? So this would be an approval of the consent agenda as presented with the exception of item H as Herman the Munster.
Right. Councilmember Matthew?
Yes.
Councilmember Boland?
Yes.
Councilmember Milawambay?
Yes.
Councilmember Imig?
Yes.
Councilmember Painter?
Yes.
Councilmember Carrio?
Yes.
Councilmember Black?
Yes.
Councilmember Crable?
Yes.
Councilmember Bray?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you very much. Uh, all joking aside, uh, we go, go to item 8H. Councilmember Black, come on down.
Yes, I just have to recuse myself because some money is being allocated to the West Bloomington Revitalization Project for which I am on the board. And I spoke to.
Good boy scout.
Yes, exactly. So I can't vote on anything that's got WPRP on it.
You don't get any money from them.
No.
But you're doing it anyway. Very good. Okay.
I'm going to turn my video off as if I were, were to have left the room.
And we will mute you.
Yes, I will be muted and no part of this conversation.
Room, but okay.
And mayor, if we could, we also have, uh, councilmember Matthew with his hand up.
Oh, councilmember Matthew, I'm sorry.
Same thing. I'm on the board of the community healthcare clinic and they're a recipient of the grant money as well, so I need to recuse.
You can recuse yourself. Okay. At this point, I saw councilmember Bray with her hand up. Was that going to be a? At this point, I saw Councilmember Bray with her hand up, was that going to be a motion, is that right, Councilmember Bray?
Yes, that was a motion to approve the item in regards to.
Mayor. Mayor.
West Bloomington Revitalization.
Just a minute, yeah, I'm sorry, we have a motion, Councilmember Bray first.
He has to recuse himself.
I'm sorry, yeah, I gotta recuse myself, I forgot, thank you.
We'll start with Councilmember Bray, you still recuse yourself until we take the vote. Councilmember Bray, would you finish your statement, please?
It says a motion to approve the West Bloomington revitalization.
Okay, and it doesn't die of a second, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Correa, and Councilmember Crable, you wanted to recuse yourself too, is that right?
Yes, yes, Mayor.
Thank you very much, okay, so we've got three recusals. Madam Clerk, would you call the roll of those who are not recused?
Right, Councilmember Mathie, oh my goodness, setting up on the wrong foot, sorry. Councilmember Bowlin.
Yes.
Councilmember Milowambwe.
Yes.
Councilmember Emig.
Yes.
Councilmember Painter.
Yes.
Councilmember Correa.
Yes.
Councilmember Bray.
Yes.
Okay, I was a little concerned that it was six, that I might have to break a tie, okay. All right, is everybody back with us?
Yes.
Okay, I'm going to go ahead and declare the public hearing under 9A to be opened, and that is a public hearing for the 2020-2024 Consolidated Plan and 2020 Annual Action Plan in consideration of authorizing submittal of the 2020-2024 Consolidated Plan and 2020 Action Plan to the US Department of Housing and Urban Development, as requested by the Community Development Department. And we don't necessarily have to have a motion, of course.
Mayor, just for the record, I am going to recuse myself from this as well, since WBRP is on this list.
Because we're not voting.
I did talk to Jeff this morning, and he recommended that I recuse myself, so I will be doing that.
Oh man, these lawyers are so, so, so picky.
Yes.
Okay, at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Jennifer Tony, who has a brief 10-minute presentation, and then the council presentation of approximately 10 minutes. Jennifer, are you there?
I am.
Thank you, welcome, and I appreciate all your help.
No problems, and thank you for, and council for allowing me to present tonight on our 2024, 2020-24 Consolidated Plan and our 2020 Annual Action Plan. Okay, so I want to start with a timeline that kind of lays out all of our consolidated plan activities. I'm going to call this our pre-COVID-19, or pre-CDPG-CV timeline, just to really point out that it was a very lengthy process, there was a lot of thought that went into it, and we did a lot of public participation and outreach, so that we could create priorities that the community felt we needed. And we started back in November of 2018, and we worked through the process, and we're originally supposed to have a public hearing in March, and unfortunately, due to social distancing guidelines, we ended up canceling that meeting, and so the public hearing we're having tonight is in place of that hearing. Okay, this is our COVID-19 timeline for the funding that we have received. A lot more has happened in a very short amount of time on this one, and so it started really with our executive order from the city, the first executive order on March 17th. We immediately started meeting with our partners to figure out what our regional plan and our regional response would look like. And early April, we joined the Shelter Assistance Coalition, and we've moved through the process through today, where we're having our public hearing, with hopefully good discussion, and then we'll be ready to present our final plan for council approval on June 8th. I want to make sure that we keep in the front of everybody's minds that, I know that the COVID-19 money is most relevant at this moment, and our residents need the money, and we need to create a plan, but I don't want us to lose sight of the fact that the plan that we are submitting to HUD actually is a five-year plan. And so this chart shows an overview of where we plan to spend our funding over the next five years. So without going through the whole thing, you can see that a little over 50% is actually going directly towards the preservation of affordable housing goal and the elimination of slum and blight goal. And although the COVID-19 money is important, it really is about 11% of our overall funding plan for the next five years. For 2020-2024, through our public outreach process, we identified several new projects and funding priority areas. Rental housing assistance through rehab was identified as one of the areas. We are implementing the initial stage of that program this year, in program year 2020. We're going to start with rehab units that are owned and operated by local not-for-profits and Bloomington Housing Authority, and then over the next year, we'll evaluate our capacity to expand the program to privately-owned rental units. We have a park improvement project planned, we have an improvement to a building that's a not-for-profit-owned building, that will be an accessibility improvement, we have a sidewalk program planned, we have administration funding, and I think overall, as you saw from the previous slide, we're at about 10% for our administration right now, and we're allowed up to 20, so we're putting as much money into programs as we can. We'll do public service activities as well, Dreams Are Possible is one of our new public service activities this year, and that was chosen as a program to address our workforce and job development, a new priority area. And then, of course, we have activities planned for our COVID-19 funding, which we'll get to right now. So with the COVID funding, COVID-19 funding was made available through the CARES Act, it's a formula grant. With it being a formula grant, we didn't get to apply for the funding until HUD what our needs are and how much money we need. They plug certain numbers for our community into their formula, and they tell us what we're going to get. And so with that, CARES Act, it also allows for some regulatory flexibilities that are applicable, not only to the COVID funding, but also to this program year. One of those flexibilities is that we're normally limited to 50% of our, 50% cap on our public service dollars. The CARES Act removes that cap, so we can spend more than 15% of our COVID-19 money, and then also, if we need to, our program year 2020 funding on public services. The other thing that it does is typically, we're only allowed to spend 25% of our allocation before we have official HUD approval. For the COVID-19 money, that restriction is removed, so we can, as soon as we have a plan in place and we're ready to implement, even if we don't have a HUD approval officially, we can go forward with the program. The COVID-19 money is very specific in that it has to be used to meet unmet needs in the community. The Stafford Act for federal relief says that there can be no duplication of benefits with this money. So CDBG has to be the funding of last resort and meet the unmet needs resulting specifically. As I said before, we're going to start, the use, or we're going to use March 17th as the starting date for eligibility under this funding, as that was the first day of the executive order. And then we have until September 30th of 2022 to expend all of the funding. If we haven't expended funding by that date, then it will go back to the federal government. So here's our budget for what we have planned. Our allocation under the formula grant for the COVID-19 funding was $329,144. Once we received that allocation, I went through and I looked at the 2020 proposed budget, knowing that we had a larger amount of carryforward funding from 2019 than we normally have, I felt comfortable that we could reduce some of the line items that we had previously planned to spend funding on. So by reducing the line items for the housing rehab and housing for the residential demolition programs, I was able to create an additional $90,920 that we could put towards the COVID-19 response. Now, with, because we had more carryforward than usual, even by reducing those line items, we are still funding them at a level that we would normally fund them at, so there shouldn't be any interruption of service. The issue is going to be whether or not we can actually get into houses due to social distancing in order to do inspections and complete interior rehabilitation work. So the two programs that we're proposing tonight in the 2020 Action Plan are Direct Aid Presidents in the amount of $270,034, and then a Business Support Program at $150,000. For the Direct Aid Program, we conducted a survey in conjunction with the Town of Normal and Plank County Regional Planning Commission. We followed up on the survey results, and with organizations that did not respond to the survey and had conversations with them as to what they felt their increased request for needs has been, and then we looked at other community surveys as well, such as the United Way Priority Areas and YWCA. Through that survey process, we initially identified four main needs. Shelter assistance, which we actually decided just today that we need to refer to that as housing assistance, because it's a little more clear to the public on what specifically can be funded. Through that, we would support assistance payments to providers for rent, mortgage, and utilities that people have gotten behind on since March 17th. Food security was identified as a priority area, medical and healthcare, and then childcare actually has come up since the survey as a need. I've got an asterisk there next to food security, because we don't, we probably will not be able to provide food through the Direct Aid Program. The community response, since we did this survey for food insecurity, has been significant, and because we have to make payments to the provider instead of the individual, it will make supporting food efforts a little more difficult. We've participated in the Shelter Assistance Coalition since early April, and the coalition is a combination of service providers, funding agencies, and community leaders. Through that coalition, we've developed a community, a coordinated community response for housing assistance. Some of the key components of this are that there's no wrong door. That means that anyone who needs to submit an application for assistance can submit their application or submit a request for an application to any one of the participating organizations. That organization will ensure that the application gets where it needs to be. So this will help eliminate bouncing people around from, from, or from agency to agency to find out who can assist them. We've also created a service matrix that outlines each of the, or all of the different services each agency can provide, and as well as a funding matrix to identify the different funding levels at each agency. We have created a single application process, as well as a coordinated entry process, where organizations will put the names of individuals that they are planning to provide assistance or that have applied for assistance on a coordinated list between the agencies, and that will help reduce the duplication of benefits that were required to follow through the Stafford Act. We're putting together a final report on all of the pieces of the work that's been done through the Shelter Assistance Coalition, and I originally thought it would be available on March, or May 29th, but it sounds like it may be available sooner, and so I'll make sure council gets a copy of that as soon as it's available. Through our proposed program, as it stands right now, we're proposing up to $1,000 per month per household with a three-month maximum. We chose three-month maximum because that is the maximum that HUD allows. Keeping in mind that with the coordinated entry process, if an agency is allowed to provide up to two months of assistance, we can come in and only provide that third month. So it's possible that we will not be providing a full three months to a good number of the households that would request assistance. And then again, we have to make payments directly to the provider, so that would be either the landlord for rent, the banker, the mortgage holder for mortgage assistance, and then it's a utility company if that's part of the request. Through the Business Support Program, this one isn't quite as far along as the other one, but we're working on it. We know that there are a lot of programs out there to support our local businesses, but there's no one program that's going to fit everyone's needs. So what we're working on currently right now is identifying the unmet needs in our community, so we can create a more targeted program and making sure that we're not duplicating benefits. The plans we've made so far are based on what we know today, and I just caught the tail end of the township meeting, and I appreciate the conversation that was occurring as far as recognizing that this is a starting point. No one has a crystal ball to identify what's going to happen tomorrow. We had changes to the coordinated entry process during a four o'clock meeting that I had today. So things are changing very rapidly, and we're trying to develop a program that meets everyone's needs while still maintaining our compliance with all of our guidelines. So keep in mind that any plans that we make today, we are made with the full understanding that we have to, we may have to correct the course down the road. We have identified, or notified HUD that we intend to use certain waivers that are allowed through the CARES Act, one of those being that we can reduce the amount of time that we require for notification of a public hearing, which is required for any amendment, and then also reducing the public comment period time. So if a need arises that we weren't anticipating, and we need to shift some of our funding down the road, that process is a little simpler and a lot faster than it would have been prior to the CARES Act. Are there any questions, or are we ready to open it up to public comment for the hearing?
We'll start with, actually, questions from the elected officials, any questions, Jennifer? Madam Clerk, I'm having a little trouble seeing everybody, do you?
Yeah, we have, let's see, Councilmember Correa, Councilmember Milowambwe, Councilmember Mathie, and Councilmember Crable with her hand up.
I don't understand why I'm having trouble, okay, so it was Councilmember Mathie?
It was Crable, Milowambwe, Mathie, Crable.
I'm sorry.
Correa, Correa, Milowambwe, Mathie, and Crable.
Okay, well, let's start with Councilmember Mathie, in that order, the order that I'm remembering it, okay, go ahead.
Thanks, Mayor. So Jennifer, thank you for putting this together always. You guys do amazing work in your department in making this all come together for you, for us. One of the questions that was brought up to me recently is that, and this is referring to the money outside of the COVID-19 money, is that there are other towns and cities that have allocated part of the money to a down payment assistance fund to help first-time homebuyers. So with the, you know, the theory being that the, one of the ways to help people break the cycle of poverty is to help them purchase their own home, and then that is a forgiveness program, where if you, you know, you can get qualified for money to help with the down payment, and if you stay owning your own home and maintaining it for X number of years, that is forgiven. But if you sell it earlier than that, that that money is repayable to the program. Obviously, it's too late to do it for this year, but is that something that we can look at incorporating for future years to, you know, help people buy their houses and stay part of the Bloomington community?
We did actually consider that for this year. One of the issues that we have with the Down Payment Assistance Program is it's considered a public service, and under normal conditions, that's capped at 15%. We normally have, we allocate about 13% to 15% of our funding already to our local organizations. So in order to fund a Down Payment Assistance Program, we have to take away from something else. So that was one of the issues. The other issue, and I'm still working on this, but the Illinois Housing Development Authority has some amazing Down Payment Assistance Programs that anyone who is eligible for CDBG would also be eligible for those programs. So my plan is to, at the very least, update our website so that we direct traffic to IDA, because I think a lot of people don't know those programs are out there.
Well, that includes me, so I look forward to hearing that, and thank you for that answer. So, because knowing that exists, I can, people that ask me the question, I can send them that direction now. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Alderman, Mathie, yeah, I mean, our housing prices relative to our income are just really off the charts, and so as many people as possible, we want to get to invest in our community, invest in their housing, and they get the middle-class welfare, where you can deduct your mortgage interest and your home, you know, insurance, et cetera, off your taxes. At this point, let's see, I have Councilmember Correa, Milowambwe, and, oh, I did say Crable, didn't I? A second, I forgot who I said, but anyway, okay. okay. Jamie, you're off the charts. Okay, I'm scratching you off. The Councilmember Carrillo, Milawambwe, and then Crable.
Okay. Thanks. And I feel like if you get to make fun of us millennials, I get to make fun of you, Grandpa. Turn on your participants tab so you can see who's...
I am not a grandpa yet!
Okay, well, quit acting like one. Okay. So, thank you so much, Jennifer. That was super thorough. I really appreciate it. So a couple of quick, and some questions are related, some are unrelated to each other. So the first question is around the five-year plan. What would you say is the breakdown between recipients that have previously received CDBG funds and then brand-new recipients in the time that you have been managing?
Oh, in the time that I've been here, we've added, since I've been here, recycling furniture for families is new. We've had three or four of the five that we currently fund are new in the last five years, probably. Again, with adding in a new partner this year with Dreams Are Possible.
Got it. Cool. And then I guess I wanted to ask about the amounts and the breakdown between the Direct Aid and the Business Assistance, and what the rationale is behind those numbers, the 270 versus 150, and how that came to be?
I'm trying to come up with a plan that where we could have some impactful initiatives while still trying to support both our businesses and residents.
Okay, so, but there's nothing that binds us to those numbers, right? If we wanted to, we could shift things one way or the other?
We can, up to a certain amount. And actually, when I put together the plan for approval on the 8th, it will include an updated citizen participation plan. In the current plan, if we adjust funding of more than $100,000 between activities, we have to go out for substantial amendment, which requires public comment, a public hearing, and HUD approval. We are actually requesting approval of a change in that plan to increase that to 150, which reduces the likelihood that we're going to have to do a substantial amendment if we move money around.
Got it. Then you had mentioned that the shifting of the name from Shelter Assistance to Housing Assistance. Can you clarify why that shift was made? And I guess wrapped up in that is, will that housing assistance also include assistance for people living in trailer parks and mobile homes and so on?
Yeah. So this actually, the change in Shelter Assistance to Housing Assistance came up in our Coalition Housing Meeting today, in that there's concerns that people will be afraid to access it or not understand that they can access it because they think it's going to be tied to a homeless shelter, with the name Shelter. So if we call it Housing Assistance, it's a little more clear of what might be available to our residents. And then, I'm sorry, what was the second part of that?
Well, I guess I'm wondering if I, like, own my mobile home, but I rent a lot. I'm technically not renting housing. I'm renting land to put my mobile home in. So I guess I was figuring if the name change was to say, oh, like, mobile homes won't be included or to carve out certain...
And to be honest, I hadn't even thought that far forward yet, but it would be rental assistance, and if it's their lot rent that they're behind on because of a job loss or something, then that should be eligible.
Okay, I figured, but the name change just, like, flagged it for me. Okay, so just, sorry, three more questions. I guess one other flag is, my assumption was, as I started to hear about this proposal, is that undocumented people probably would not qualify because these are funds coming from the federal government. Is that correct?
That is correct for our funding, but through the coordinated entry process, we're identifying organizations that have the ability to help undocumented. So as long as the agency identifies that on our service matrix, that would be an agency that if someone comes into us and they're undocumented, we would take the application and make sure it gets to that organization that can serve undocumented.
Yeah, so I guess the thing to flag is just, or for us to look into and to make clear, especially as we start to publicize this, is, you know, that there has been some blowback from folks with temporary statuses or legal permanent residence statuses who are in some way engaging in government programs and receiving, you know, any form of government assistance. You know, there have been proposals to say, that's going to hurt you when you apply for citizenship later. So really want to make sure that we, like, dig deep into that because we don't want that to come back and haunt people later on, a program that we, you know, invited them to participate in today. So I think, you know, we want to make sure that we're super, super clear on the legality of all of that. And then I guess, I want to flag one concern, and then I want to clarify. So I had heard that it was MCCA. Originally, I think of the proposal, I had heard it was MCCA that was going to be the folks administering the funds. Then I heard Alderman, Crable, and I don't know if this was him speaking, talk about maybe township admin. So who would be administering these COVID-related funds?
We have looked at the administration of these funds from a lot of different angles and struggled with exactly the best agency or organization to handle that. And then after a discussion with HUD last week, it became very apparent that the most efficient way for us to handle it is going to be to handle it in-house. And so we've identified staff that can help with that process. It will help reduce the city's liability on that duplication of benefits. And unfortunately, because of HUD's restrictions, a lot of the other organizations are going to be able to require less documentation to have in the file, and we can't get around that. I thought maybe we could, but we're not going to be able to. So it's just easier to do it in-house, honestly.
Got it. Okay. And then the last thing, which is a concern and wrapped in a question and an enigma, which is around this part around payments made directly to a provider, and a question around who does that leave out, in terms of folks who maybe aren't taking their kids to certify, to like, you know, to like a daycare, but like, leave them in the care of somebody in their family, and people who generally are operating in home care work that is not often recognized as legitimate work, caretakers, babysitters, so on and so forth, or people who rent from families, or, you know, so just those types of situations where it will be difficult for payment to be made to, like, my sister who's watching my kid, or something like that.
Yeah. Per HUD's regulation, we have to issue a payment to the provider of the service. We can't issue it to an individual. So if the childcare issue is a little bit different, and I'll be honest, we haven't explored it in great detail. We have a wonderful organization in town, Childcare Resource and Referral, that we will need to coordinate with to determine what the real need is and who is our money going to best serve. So the childcare issue is something that we have to explore a little bit further down the road. And realistically, as long as people are home right now, a lot of them are meeting their own needs. Not everybody, but with rental, I mean, if you are legitimately renting from a relative, as long as that property is registered in the rental registration program here with the city, we can issue a check, whether it's a family member or not.
Right. No, no, no. I totally get that. I mean, I guess I'm just thinking back to me 10 years ago, and if I had had a doctor's bill, I would have hit up my parents to help me pay it, and then I wouldn't have a provider to pay. Like, it'd be, I wouldn't, you know what I mean? I wouldn't be able to go benefit from that assistance. And so was curious about whether that's something that's like a HUD-mandated requirement, whether that's something that the coalition came up with, whether that's something we're coming up with, and then inviting us to be as creative as possible to figure out how we can still meet the need, working as much at the edges of what's required.
Gotcha. Yeah, unfortunately, it's part of the CDBG regulation, so there's no way around that one.
Okay, understood. Thank you so much. That's all my questions.
Great. Thank you very much. We're going to move to Alderman. I forgot what order I'm in. Milawambwe, and then Crable and Bolan.
Come on, Grandpa.
Hey, hey, I'm not a grandpa. I'd like to be a grandpa. You got news for me? I don't know. Okay.
Okay, this is getting dangerous.
Oh, it's all a good...
Yeah. So first of all, I want to say thank you to Jennifer for all the work that you've done. I do know, I've heard from, you know, folks in the coalition that you've done a fantastic job representing the city, so I want to make sure that that's recognized. And I actually don't, I don't know how you do it, you know, given all the other things that you have to do, and it doesn't feel like you've lost the beat, so thank you very much. My question is around business assistance. I'm assuming that the goal of that assistance is to make sure that those businesses eventually are able to either hire or retain workers to help with unemployment numbers. But how do you plan on, is there something that you're working on to ensure that that happens?
This one is still early in the process, but with any project that we fund with CDBG, we have to meet a national objective. And one of the things you can use for economic development is job creation and job retention. So we would probably, you know, be trying to structure our program in that way so that we are counting those jobs through, so that we can use that national objective and make sure that we're allowing businesses to open up and make sure that they have the help that they need.
Okay. Now, as a follow-up, are you considering retraining of individuals who might be who are unemployed?
Job training is an eligible expense that we could look at. We really, this is one of the areas where not having official guidance from HUD yet is going to hold us back because we don't have a business support program right now, and we have to create one from scratch. We really need that direction from HUD on what is eligible and what isn't specifically before we can move forward. But we did propose that job training would be something that we could use the funding for, yes.
Okay. And then as the last question, are you, I had heard about these, I mean, contact tracing seems to be the big deal right now. Is that something that you would consider as a possibility in terms of training for folks in our community?
If we determine that it's a need, yes. It would be something that would be eligible to do under a public service activity, yes.
Okay. All right. Well, thank you so much. Keep up the good work.
Thank you. Yeah, we are way, way, way over our time. Can I have a motion to extend this by 10 minutes? Because as I can tell, I've got three people who still want to speak, and I doubt they're going to do it in like 60 seconds combined. So I do see a motion by Councilmember Milawambwe. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilmember Emig. Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll to extend this time by 10 minutes, please?
Councilmember Mathie.
Yes, but 10 minutes is never going to be enough.
Councilmember Bolan.
Yes.
Councilmember Milawambwe.
Yes.
Councilmember Emig.
Yes.
Councilmember Painter.
Yes.
Councilmember Carrillo.
Yes.
Councilmember Crable.
Yes.
Councilmember Bray.
Yes.
Okay. But 10 minutes will be enough because we're going to be so succinct. I'm going to start with Councilmember Crable, and then Bolan and Emig. And I'm sure we're going to make this in 10 minutes. Councilmember Crable.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, Jennifer, for, like others have said, all the work that you've put in to this, and you've made it very understandable for us and for the public. So thank you for that. The first couple of questions I have are on the general CDBG funding. When you talk about, for instance, homeowner housing rehabilitation loans, so in that sense, and homeowner grants, we are just giving homeowners money to hire a contractor to complete the renovations or whatever. Is that accurate?
No, actually, we, again, don't make any payments directly to our residents. We pay the contractors. We have a specific protocol where we have to put it out for bid. We have to go with the lowest bid. We have a list of approved contractors, and then we manage the work in-house. The agreement is actually between the homeowner and the contractor, but we manage the project.
And is that where code enforcement comes in?
Yeah, we have a rehab, yeah, we have a rehab specialist that that's part of his job is to do all that work, yeah.
Thank you. And then, how many, on average, residential demolitions does a city do through the CDBG?
I think our goal for this coming five-year plan is 30, 25 to 30. So we typically will do five to six a year. Part of it depends on how often we can, how quickly houses come to us. So we have a long list of houses that are maybe in court right now that we know we will eventually get possession of and be able to demolish, but we don't have them yet. So, you know, we don't ever know for sure.
Great, thank you. So you talked about, going now to COVID questions, you talked about the CDBG funds being a last resort. So for instance, in the township, we talked about setting up this special fund, right, that, you know, hasn't existed before. So once that's set up, would that also have to be used prior to CDBG funding?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, and the coordinated response that we have developed through the Shelter Assistance Coalition has a plan in place to help ensure that that happens, or I shouldn't say ensure, but to be more likely that that's going to happen, that the correct agency is funding the project first.
And then, on the, so the CDBG funds or the proposal is to use it both for rental assistance and mortgage assistance, is that correct?
Yes.
And any, right now, is any other agency providing mortgage assistance, I mean, outside of COVID-19?
Yes, MidCentral Community Action, I believe, currently provides it through their community service block grant. And that's, they have an additional COVID allowance, but they also have their regular allocation that they are able to do mortgage assistance through.
Okay.
And I believe the Salvation Army does as well through their pot of money.
Gotcha. Okay, thank you. And then, so, you know, with rental assistance, for instance, when we, when, you know, money would be paid to the landlord, and the max you indicated would be $1,000 a month for three months. So let's say the rent is $1,200. How does that work then, in that situation?
We could combine funding if, for instance, they were eligible, let's say, for township. Township could kick in what their, like, the first, I think their limit is maybe 500, or let's just say it's 500. Then CDBG or CSBG, either one through MidCentral, could be used to make up that difference.
Okay. And do we have mechanisms in place, for instance, you know, let's just say landlord, you know, some landlord says, hey, I want to, I'm going to use this money I get from this for late fees, for instance, and not for rent. Do we have ways to ensure that doesn't happen?
That'll be, the next step after tonight is to start looking at what our internal program looks like. And so I'm sure it will include an agreement with the landlord that states that this is what is owed, and, you know, by the city paying this amount, it clears out the debt, and then the landlord would sign off on it.
And going to the administration, Jennifer, how long do you think it would take to stand up, you know, a unit, you know, with the city that can handle these types of requests?
My goal is to be ready to have it out the door and ready for the public by June 15th.
Okay. And is there any special training that will be required? For instance, I know the township has, you know, case managers, and I don't know if there need to be training with regard to, you know, case management?
Yeah, we will be setting up an extensive set of policies and procedures that anyone that would be taking in applications would be able to follow. There'll be a sample application, and then ultimately, I anticipate having a lot of oversight to ensure that, you know, all the files are accurate before we actually issue payment.
And I don't know if you've looked, one last question. I don't know if you've looked at this, but, you know, one of the issues somebody raised with me was, like, when MCCA requires assistance, right, and probably other places, you have to submit documentation, copies of documents, right? And there's limited ability to go places now to copy documents. Have you or other members of the coalition kind of thought about what's a way to allow that to happen if people don't have ready access to make those types of copies?
We will have to work on that. Typically, under our normal housing rehab program, we just have the client bring in the information, and then we make copies and then give them and then we make copies and then give them back the originals. And that's a process we'll have to work forward or work towards to figure out during this time where we're not open to the public, how we're going to make that happen. But we do recognize that it's a concern for people. Obviously, if they probably can't make a copy, then they might have not have the ability to scan. But we can accept things electronically as well. But we'll work on that.
Thank you so much, Jennifer. Really appreciate it.
Let's just also clarify that as we're going through a public hearing on a HUD document and HUD plan, that if we have technical questions and that are micro questions, that those should be asked before we have a public hearing, so we don't have to continue to extend our public hearing. At this point, I'm going to turn to Councilmember Boland and then Emig in what very little time we have left. Councilmember Boland. Councilmember Boland?
You're muted, Donna. Sorry. I'm going to be very concise. I would like to throw my support behind using the $120,000 for economic development to possibly pay for GED tuition vouchers or training vouchers. There are already several programs that will directly assist the businesses. I don't want to, you know, poo-poo the businesses, but I think that the best approach at this point in time would be to get good training so that the individuals can go and get a job, maybe even a better job than they had before. And I'll end it there. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Emig.
Yeah, this is quick, too. Most of my questions have been asked and answered, so thank you, Jennifer. I I just have a quick question about non-COVID-19 related funds. Is it general practice that the city releases an RFP and and folks or organizations can apply? How does that process work? Okay.
Okay, so in a typical year, this last year was that we were a little bit later because of the consolidated planning process. But in a typical year, in July or August, we will put out a notification for a request for proposals. And it's usually open for 45 to 60 days, depending on when we are able to get it released. We now have grant management software that we used for the first time for this round of applications. So agencies submit an online application under either a public service category or a public facility and infrastructure project. I took myself out of the review process through the software this time. And we we requested reviewers, they were able to review the projects and rank them based on a scoring rubric that was published on our website along with the application. And then we looked at all organizations that scored, had an application that scored above the main score, and then we considered at what level we could fund them at. So it needs to be a competitive process and I'm working towards really taking my office, which is me, out of that, out of that decision-making process. And so we're almost, we're almost 100% there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, were there any people who've called in for public comment on this public hearing?
Yes, Mayor, we actually have seven people who registered to speak on this public hearing, six of which are available today. So I have Doug Hennessy is up first.
Okay.
And I'll begin by swearing him in.
Okay.
Mr. Hennessy, if you'll raise your right hand.
Okay.
And do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, to help you, God?
I do.
Thank you.
Yes, yeah, I'm Father Doug Hennessy, the pastor emeritus of Holy Trinity Catholic Church here in town and a member of IPA. I want to congratulate the city on the plan remaining to receive the money from the federal government to meet the real needs of people in the city. It's really in the very best tradition of our nation, the Judeo-Christian tradition, which so many of us share. And at the same time, I'd also urge the council to do all you can to provide for those who, for whatever reason, these monies won't reach. For they too are sisters and brothers, and we need our help, need our help at this time. So as you go ahead with these plans, let's make sure no one falls through the cracks. We need to continue to remain alert to help all who need it at this very difficult time. And I thank you for the opportunity to comment this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Father. Next, Madam Clerk.
And next up, we have Louis Goslin. And Louis, if you'll raise your right hand, please. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
Yep.
Thank you.
Yeah, so I wanted to echo what Father Hennessy said, and that this is an encouraging step and and that, you know, I'm grateful that the conversation is moving forward with the council. I see there's an opening for an opportunity and a recognition that, as was alluded to in some of what we've heard from our officials, both in the township and as well as Ms. Tony. You know, this could be an ongoing sort of protracted thing that needs to be addressed in terms of the need. And so I know that early on, as the community was calling for this conversation to take place, there was a concern expressed around collecting data to better understand the scope of the need and the details around it. And I think that this provides an opportunity to do just that. I'm especially encouraged that the city's made the decision to, you know, potentially open this up in-house, because I think that that creates additional accountability and transparency and the opportunity to collect data for what could be an ongoing problem. I also am encouraged that the conversation has started in a recognition that this isn't going to address everyone's needs, that the nature of these federal funds could present some limitation as to who's able to access this assistance. And so I would encourage that this conversation, even once this decision's been made as to do with, what to do with these resources, that it continues and that our elected leaders continue thinking about who's left out and what can be done with perhaps more nimble or versatile municipal sources. And so in all, I would just say that I've been largely encouraged by the leadership and the conversation that's been had tonight, and I'm very appreciative of what's been brought forward. I also want to echo this sort of question around guidelines on what to do with the money that's encouraging business. We do want to encourage jobs. We want to address unemployment. But I think, you know, Councilmember Milawonway said, well, what are the, what are the guidelines and the things that the the city will follow or put into place to make sure that the funds are actually going towards helping keep people in the workforce? And so all in all, I think that this is a good conversation that's being had. And I hope that it continues well beyond this decision around these current resources. So with that all, thank you for for hearing me and for for taking up this issue and for all the city officials as well who continue to make this process accessible to the public as we're doing this from home. So thank you.
Thank you, Louis. Madam Clerk, next.
Up next, we have Joyce Kay. Joyce, if you could please, oh, trying to get you unmuted, sorry.
Unmute.
Okay, we got you. Joyce, if you'll raise your right hand, please. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, I sent an email in, but I want to be much briefer than that and just say that I echo what Louis was saying and that my concern is for those that don't have social security numbers. I'm concerned about those that might slip through the cracks that might be hardest hit, and we may not be, you know, helping them. And we do need to think about them and provide for them. So that is my shortened statement. Thank you.
Thank you, Joyce. We appreciate it. Madam Clerk.
And up next, we have Don Carlson.
Don?
Yeah, thank you.
If you could please raise your right hand, thank you. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
I do.
Thank you.
My name is Don Carlson. I'm a resident of Bloomington and a member of Illinois People's Action. For the last two and a half months, we've held a series of eight community Zoom meetings seeking our own public input on what everyday people want in our city and county to do in response to the COVID-19 crisis. Overwhelmingly, the hundreds of people participating want and need direct financial support from our city for needy people who are facing, for perhaps for the first time, tough economic times. I can report that IPA supports the two main items presented in this CDBG COVID public hearing. One is we support the use of block grant dollars for direct financial assistance to residents and financial need related to COVID-19. And two, we support the City of Bloomington as the direct administrator of financial assistance. This block grant COVID proposal is is just that, a proposal to be fleshed out by city staff. And as staff prepares the details and ultimately your consent, we make the following suggestions. One is that these funds should be considered as an initial investment and not a one-time problem-solved approach. Nobody knows the true economic impact today. But we do know that supplemental unemployment benefits run out on July 31st. And the April state unemployment data won't come out until Friday. That there are thousands of McLean County residents who have newly applied for unemployment at rates that haven't been seen since the Great Depression. Two, that federal CDBG COVID-19 guidelines, though not fully known yet, we can anticipate that probably not all of our residents will be eligible, especially those with social security numbers or other challenges. The city should immediately begin the process of creating its own non-federally funded program through the township and city funds to assist those who fall through the cracks. And finally, third, the assistance to small businesses should focus on keeping and rehiring workers like the federal PPP program. That said, we know that restaurant owners have unique challenges like rent and utilities that should be taken into consideration. So thank you for this opportunity to participate in this hearing. And Illinois People's Action remains ready to help at all levels of city government in moving forward on this COVID-19 assistance plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Don. Madam Clerk, the next. Madam Clerk.
Sorry, I was muted. We have Christina Deutsch up next. Christina, could you start your video for us, please? Thank you. And if you could raise your right hand, please?
Yes.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God?
I do.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you very much for allowing me to speak on behalf of this resolution you're taking. First of all, I'm so thankful that we received as a city the money that is badly needed for this, the problem that this pandemic caused. As a community, we try to come up with ideas how to help the poor, the needy. And I just want to support the city council and and everybody that's going to be working on this and thanking you in advance. I think everybody said what we want to say. I am someone who's been in the community, and I have seen people falling through the cracks. I am now part of the, on the board of Illinois People's Action. And so we continue to try to solve these problems. My only suggestion is, in my concern, how is this going to be disseminated? Usually, people don't find out until it's too late, and some don't ever find out, and they try to solve their problems. And maybe later on, we'll know how is this going to be disseminated as information and maybe even in Spanish? So that's all I have to say. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Christina. Madam Clerk, is there, was that it, or is there somebody else?
There is one more, Cecilia Long. If you could please start your video. Thank you. And if you could raise your right hand, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth to help you, God? Oh, one more time in response, sorry.
Yes.
Thank you. Go ahead.
Thank you. Hello, councilmembers. My name's Cecilia, and I want to speak directly to directing funds to support people in our community right now for COVID-19. First, I want to thank you guys for opening up this space for us to be able to share in this way. It's been difficult for everyone to not be able to meet face to face. I shared last month during public comment that I've been working with students at Heartland Community College who've lost their jobs and don't have income, savings, or any other support, social support to help get them through this difficult time. My team is currently working with a list of over 140 students who've been denied other aid and are in positions where they're already been, where they were already living paycheck to paycheck and now are two months behind on rent, utilities, and their bills are continuing to stack up. I'm also concerned for residents who, it sounds like the CDBG funds and we're finding this at Heartland as well, where the funds are leaving out populations that don't have social security numbers and don't have all the necessary documentation to get those, to have access to those funds. So I ask that the city consider using their access to different funding accounts, so providing direct aid to residents using your emergency funds, your COVID-related federal grant funds, and also general funds that you have access to. Also, I want to ask that the funds be easy to apply for. The application processes right now that people have to go through for social services, all the documentation that's requirement, required is exhaustive, provides a lot of barriers and eligibility. So I'd ask that it be easy to apply for and that just proof of financial impact due to COVID-19 is necessary. And also that people that need to apply for it that are homebound or don't have printers, don't have access to something to make copies of necessary documentation, that accommodations be made to make that accessible. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate that. Madam Clerk, is that the list of people who have requested?
For this public hearing, there is one other person, Derek Lowe, that I want to recognize but did not call in. Other than that, that's the end of the calls for public hearing.
Once again, we we're over budgeted in time by a lot, but I'm going to declare this public hearing under 9A to be completed. We move to the next public hearing, our second public hearing under 9B. And that's public hearing on a petition submitted by Eastview Christian Church requesting the vacation of the north south.
I'm back by Maboka.
I'm sorry?
Is it Maboka, aren't you leaving?
Oh, wait, I I haven't opened the public hearing yet. Wait.
I saw him waving goodbye.
No, 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 no. Okay, public hearing on the Eastview Christian Church at 401 West Union Street. That's in your ward, dude, as requested by the Community Development Department. We have a five-minute presentation and then council discussion. So I don't think anybody has to.
Call on Maboka.
Pardon me?
Call on Maboka.
Maboka, what's the story, Maboka?
Okay, I have to recuse myself because I'm a member of Eastview Christian Church. And I'm also, and I'm also recusing myself on the item to be recorded on the regular agenda.
Okay, that's fine, but it just, we haven't all, we haven't even had the public, we haven't even had the comment period, so. But I appreciate that. And then, uh, council member, so you're recused, you know, you could just kind of blank out. Although, and Scott, did you want to recuse yourself for some reason?
No, no, I'm just saying I'm back and Maboka's leaving.
You're back, Maboka. Okay, okay, that's fine. Yeah, I mean, at this point, all we have, we're starting out with Kevin Cothe, who's going to give us a very brief presentation. And then we'll have whatever council discussion there might be on this. And so, Kevin, come on down. The price is right.
Okay, well, thank you, Mayor and Council. This will be a real brief presentation. We have the petition from Eastview Christian Church or to vacate the alley just west of their facility at 401 West Union Street. You can see on the slide that the alley separates their parking area from the church. The vacation plan is just for the north-south alley, does not affect the east-west alley. There are homes up along Seminary that have access to that east-west alley. But the only property that currently fronts that property that they don't own is 1309 B Street, and they have an option to purchase that. The home that was at the corner of Lee and Union was purchased by the church and torn down, as you can see in the photo in the lower left, that's an empty site now. This is kind of a layout of what they intend to do with their parking lot expansion. This is kind of a layout of what they intend to do with their parking lot expansion to provide more parking for their facility and services. They have a kind of a phase one and a phase two. The phase two would be where that home is currently at 1309 Lee Street. So this public alley is currently paved. As a city, we have the responsibility to maintain it. If it's as vacated, then that will be turned over to the, to the church, and they would be responsible for maintaining that land into the future. So that's a quick overview of this. It has also gone to the zoning board of appeals for a special use permit for this parking lot expansion. So that's why I have, except for questions.
Questions of Mr. Cothe. Okay, I'm having difficulty.
It looks like, Mayor, that Councilmember Crable and Councilmember Bowlin have their hand up.
Okay, actually, I can see that now. Thank you so much, Madam. We'll do it in that order. Oh, reverse alphabetical order. Councilmember Crable and then Councilmember Bowlin.
Thank you, Mayor, and thanks, Kevin, for the presentation. Now, is Eastview, are they asking for a waiver due to being unable to pay? Or what's the re, is there a reason they have to give for asking the waiver?
Right, so the, the next item on the agenda, on the regular agenda, is the actual vacation. This is the public hearing at this time. And they have asked for a waiver of the, you know, the, our, our street and alley vacation policy has the provisions for the public hearing, also has provisions for compensation to the city for the value of the land. And so that is part of the next item, is that the, the value of the alley is considered just over $9,000, and they've asked for that to be waived. They do provide different programs, not only for the members of the church, but also support the West Side community with different programs as well.
And just to clarify what you've said, is that is our charge here is mainly to clarify information, the, whether or not we charge them or not, it's a separate issue that we'll be deciding after the public hearing, correct, Mr. Cothe?
That is correct. That's item 10A, I believe, on the regular agenda. This is the public hearing part.
Thanks, Kevin.
Yeah, I have just two questions. You mentioned the zoning board of appeals, and I believe they came forward and asked for a reduction of parking spaces. Is that related to the fact that there's not enough parking there at all? Because I went out to the site today and there's very few parking spots. And even with knocking down and paving over the vacant lots that will be there, is, will that total up to the 57 spots that they're requesting?
I believe their plan shows that they'll be able to provide 45 of the 57, so.
Okay.
If there's more specific questions, I think Katie Simpson, I believe, is on the call, too. She, she would have more firsthand knowledge of that.
Okay.
Thank you, Kevin. Yes. Donna, the, the variance was approved as part of the special use permit to allow them to have the 47 parking spaces. Part of the reason for, I start my, part of the reason for approving the variance was to, was to ensure that the neighborhood surrounding the area is still protected. So there is on-street parking. There is an option for people to walk to the church. There's a few other zoning reductions that can be added, but all in all, they still needed the, the reduction in parking spaces.
Okay. And now the only other comment I would like to make or question, this little diagram or that you just put up on the screen, I guess is the new site plan? Would that be correct for the parking lot?
Right, so this shows both phases. So it shows phase two, which would involve the acquisition of the property at, of the, the house just north of the land that they own. But right now, they would be doing phase one, which is everything south of that. So if you, if you're looking at the site plan, you see the first row of parking, and then there's an arrow pointing left and an arrow pointing right, and then there's a landscape island. It would be kind of to that line if you're working from down, downward from the north-south, from the east-west alley down to that middle, that middle curved parking island.
Yeah, you don't need to explain because when I went out and looked at it, I kind of was visualizing. And I see on this diagram, one of the issues or points I was going to bring up, and that had to do with the green screen, you know, the landscaping, since it's, it's a residential neighborhood. And that big parking lot would be viewed from the front yard and front window, the people directly across the street. So as long as you have this green screen, that's, that was one of my concerns. So thank you.
That's a good point. They're also proposing a three-foot fence just to help shield parking lights from blinding people's windows and-
Okay, great, great. Thank you.
Great. Thank you very much. Madam Perk, were there any, anyone call in? Did anyone call in to participate? Madam Perk, you're muted. I think you're muted.
It's a habit of this evening. I apologize. We had two people call in. Tyler Harley did not make it into the call, and just want to recognize him. And then second would be Mark Zimmerman, and I do have him there. Mark?
Would, you need to square him in?
Yep. Let me get him unmuted. There we go. Mark, if you'd raise your right hand, please. Thank you. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth so help you God?
I do.
Thank you.
Hello, Mayor, Rainer, Council. Thanks for giving me the opportunity to share with you a little bit this evening. Tyler could not be with us, and so he asked me to step in his place. I'm the pastor of finance at, at Eastview Christian Church, a Bloomington resident, and I've been on staff at the church for about nine years now. Just wanted to be able to share a little bit about what we're doing at this facility and all the things that, that Eastview's involved with. Obviously, we do operate a, a church at the Bloomington campus, but the primary reason that we acquired that property a couple of years ago was to provide a community center, one that would serve our west side of town and allow us to be really hands and feet to our community. And so through that site, we provide a food pantry that serves 80 to 100 families a week through that pantry. We also are involved with an after-school program that's in conjunction with Benton Elementary and Western Avenue. We also have the Jewel Foundation that, that operates out of this facility, as well as counseling services and a number of other things that we're working to expand on in the coming years to be a, a good neighbor to that community and to the community of Bloomington on the west side. The reason that we've really asked to expand our parking in this way is because as we become a greater service to the community, we need more space for people, and we don't want to clog up the roadways with on-street parking. And so one of the ways we felt we could do that and add value is by expanding our parking to serve more people. And I know the question has come up, too, about why we would ask for a waiver for the, the fee to, to acquire the alley. I know that's going to come up in a little bit, but I, I just want to share with you that the resources that we save and with that are money, are funds that we're able to put back into the community through our programs. Our Bloomington campus has been a major response center for COVID relief, and our churches currently raised over $300,000 to help toward that, both in providing food through our food pantry, direct assistance to families, assistance to businesses. We've already disseminated probably about a third of that, and we'll be looking to disseminate another 100 to 200,000 dollars over the next two to three months. And so we see ourselves as a great resource for the community, and one of the natural steps as a good neighbor is to provide some additional parking so that campus can be more useful for the community. And we feel like this is a good plan and one that, that will bring value to the whole neighborhood.
Thank you, Mark. Appreciate that very much and appreciate all of what you do. Madam Perk, is there anyone else?
There is not.
Okay, we're going to go ahead and call the public hearing on that item to be closed. We next move on to our regular agenda, and this is consideration and action on ordinance approving the vacation of the alley in the west end subdivision of Seminary Block and the seminary addition in that would be to vacate this adjacent to the Eastview Christian Church at 401 West Union Street, as requested by the Public Works Department. The alternatives that have been suggested as motions are alternative one, excuse me, alternative A, the proposed ordinance to be approved contingent upon Eastview Church paying the required alley vacation compensation. And the other would be the proposed ordinance be approved and that the requirement that compensation be paid in the amount of $9,072.44 be waived. I guess there's also a third option that, that of course would be to disapprove, but before we begin any conversation, oh, excuse me. Kevin, you have a brief conversation before I ask for a motion. I'm sorry, you have a presentation. Kevin?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and Council. Really, you saw the presentation before. The only thing I'd add is that, you know, as far as the alley goes, it is paved, it's asphalt. And so the liability currently is with the city as far as maintenance goes. You know, at some point in time, we would be resurfacing that alley again, and that's going to be over a $50,000 cost if we maintain that alley. So that's just another consideration as you deliberate which, which option to pick here.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that. Yes, Madam-
Sorry to interrupt. Could we also go to City Manager Gleason?
Mr. Gleason, did you have, I'm sorry, did you have something to add?
Yeah, I've been ignored all night and-
I was talking about that. Well, we'll-
Missed my COVID comments, you know, all kinds of stuff, so.
Tell me you were good.
But, no, in addition to Kevin's comments, we also, as a staff, we didn't take a position on the request to waive the $9,000 plus. But the request came because of the mission to the west end of the community, felt that this was something worthy of council considering. Our concern would be that we do not set a precedent. Or if this is something we are to continue the practice of, maybe it turns into a grant allowance for a like-type of project. That was the only additional comments.
Thank you so much. And I do see some, actually, I'm going to move to Councilmember Black because this is his ward. Councilmember Black.
Yeah, I'm going to go ahead and make a motion that we approve the alternative B, that we're going to waive the fee.
Okay, move by Councilmember Black. Before we go to discussion, and obviously you're not waiving your right to weigh in on any discussion by making the motion, is there a second to that motion? Councilmember Bowlin, are you willing to second that motion?
Oh, Councilmember Emick has served V sign up, so.
Oh, well, I don't see it all.
Thank you, Council, Councilmember Bowlin. So does Councilmember Bray.
I need a second before we can talk. Okay, second by Councilmember Emick. Councilmember Bowlin, since I called on you, I'm going to go back to you.
Yes, I, I, I agree with what Scott is recommending. I think that the fact that they are going to be expected to put in all that landscaping to make sure that that corner is attractive and fits in with the rest of the neighborhood, that will also cost them. And the only thing I'm sad about is that cute little house that's on the corner. That's so, that's so well taken care of. It's going to be gone, but it's for a good cause, so thank you.
And we do save money in the long run, as Kevin has pointed out. Councilmember Carrillo. Jen?
Yeah, I guess that was just, my comment is, appreciate that you brought out that it does save us money in the long run. I am wary about setting the precedent, and so I think my question is to, to Tim and staff, like, have we thought through about what happens if we have other faith-based institutions that I know are seeing really rough times, particularly because they aren't able to gather in person, come to us with, with, you know, requests similar to, to this? And are we prepared to, to staff those on a case-by-case basis?
Well, I think, I think that's, if I could just interject before I go to Tim, I think you pointed out, and it's a, it's a great question. It comes right to the core of this, but I think it is also the case that, as Kevin pointed out, if we're going to save tens of thousands of dollars in the long run, if somebody else can demonstrate that they're going to save us tens of thousands of dollars, then maybe we'll consider the request, too. I'm going to turn to Tim. Tim?
Well, basically, the same comments as before. This is going to save us some ongoing costs for maintenance of the alley. But really, this is one that Katie Simpson, Bob Mard, Billy Tyus, Kevin have talked about. What, what precedent does this set? And if this is going to be treated as a one-off, then it's going to be our responsibility to get all the information that we possibly can to counsel for you to consider these as, as one-offs. Or we can go down the pathway of trying to, or creating a grant program where you have criteria, you have benchmarks that have to be met, and everybody that applies could be eligible, given the guidelines of the grant program.
Thank you so much.
Councilmember Black, did you still want to speak?
Did, yeah. I was just, I was just going through the city portal because I, I'm remembering that we had a very similar situation when I first got on council, and thankfully, our portal, you can go back seven years, no problem, look at old agendas. And I'm pretty confident that we, we had the same arrangement with Illinois Wesleyan with a street vacation that we did not charge them for it because we weren't going to have to maintain some of the alleyways. And I can't find the exact agenda, but I'll look.
No, no, you and I were both on the council.
It was like right away.
I, I remember, you know, the people saying, shouldn't you recuse yourself as mayor? I said, well, I've got to sign documents, and I'm always doing stuff with Illinois Wesleyan. I'm a tenured full professor. They can't touch my salary, so yeah, I'm going to participate. So, but, but it was, it would have been, if it wasn't 13, it was no later than 2014 where we voted to leave Kate.
And just at a high level, the way I look at this stuff is this is less streets and less, less alleyways that we got to maintain and keep potholes filled and such. This is a long-term savings. I got no problem.
All the above. Thank you very much, Scott. I appreciate that. Okay, at this point, I, we did have a motion and we did have a second. If there is no further discussion, I don't see any hands. Madam Perk, would you please call the roll?
Councilmember Matthew?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowlin?
Yes.
Councilmember Emick?
Yes.
Councilmember Painter?
Yes.
Councilmember Carrillo?
Yes.
Councilmember Black?
Yes.
Councilmember Crable?
Yes.
Councilmember Bray?
Yes.
Thank you very much. There are no names to announce. Madam Perk, we move to item 10B, our last action item of the night. It's consideration and potential regarding ordinance 2020-18, an ordinance declaring the local emergency on COVID's virus. And just so that you are not left out and don't feel neglected, I'm turning this over for five whole minutes to our distinguished city manager, Tim Gleason.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm going to take two minutes. This is, I think, the 18th amendment to the emergency order that comes before council. And it just is a small change to account for the fact that extension of outdoor premises may be onto private property and not just public property. Added parking spaces as a specific example of where premises may be expanded. The city manager can waive other requirements related to off-premises outdoor business operations, including the use of tents. And the city manager can issue other executive orders to allow, fore and expedite, the allowance of outdoor business operations. And this is entirely, you know, trying to move into the third phase as we reopen business within the community, bars, restaurants, and such.
Okay, questions of Mr. Gleason? Is there a motion?
Mayor, we do have-
I'm sorry, there are three. Oh, jeez. I needed to keep my glasses on. I'm sorry. I'm going to take them in the, oh, Lord, they, they, they keep popping up. Okay, Bray, Carrillo, Black, and Bowlin. Let's start with the older woman, Bray.
Yes, Mayor, thank you. I'd like to make a motion that we approve this agenda item as presented.
Thank you so much. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Councilmember Bowlin. Okay, did you want to add anything else, Councilmember Bray?
No, Mayor, thank you.
Okay, Councilmember Carrillo and then Black and Bowlin.
Yeah, just a quick question of clarification for our distinguished city manager. So I have heard a lot of conversation, especially and excitement around planning for reopening of businesses downtown and possible street closings, whether complete street closings or the closing of one specific lane or one block and so on and so forth. And I just want to clarify whether us approving this amendment then sort of kicks that over to you to sort that whole thing out, or whether that's still something that we will work out and that's going to come to council for approval.
No, this emergency, this amendment to the emergency order- No, this emergency, this amendment to the emergency order would grant that authority at my level. Every time a decision's made like that, I will definitely inform council constituents. Wouldn't be uncommon for constituents to be reaching out to you guys with questions.
Thank you.
Councilmember Black?
Yes, thank you. And I just wanted to take a quick moment and say that I'm really excited about this. I think Tim and his team are going to do a great job, make a, show the community that we are easy to work with, that we are willing to be flexible under the difficult circumstances. And there might be a misstep here or two, but I don't care. I'd rather try it out and see what works. So, Tim has my full support, Get Things Done Club. I'm very excited. This definitely falls in my category.
Thank you very much. I, I'd just like to add that Councilmember Matthew and I met with some people downtown today, and I think we are, you know, they're interested and anxious to, to move forward as long as we are consistent with state guidelines and state law, and in some cases perhaps common sense. I think we're, we want to say to people, we want to be creative. You be creative, work with us, work with Melissa Hahn, work with Billy Tyus, work with Tim Gleason, and sort of up the administrative food chain, and we will try to make things happen. If you have a parking lot, even if, and maybe we can let you take half your parking lot and use that outside if you don't have outside facilities. If you, for special events in certain instances, want us to close off streets, we can do things like that. We want our business to survive and thrive. We want people to come back to work, but we want it to be safely. So, thank you very much, Tim. Thank you so much for all you're doing. And I, I think as much as possible, we want to, obviously, we all want to get back to normalcy. It's not going to happen tomorrow. We're not flipping a switch. But at the very least, we can begin to make steps and make progress in that direction so that our community can once again become whole again. So, at this point, are the, let's see, I have a council, I'm sorry, I'm blithering on, Councilmember Emig?
I, I do support this. I'm just, I'm curious about, about process, and maybe that's what will be determined next. If, do the, the plans for reopening and using the outdoor space get submitted to the city clerk or Melissa Hahn's office? And do we, do we have a mechanism for enforcing, not shaming, gently enforcing our population to comply with public health recommendations?
If, if I could just add before Tim starts and then Tim can fill in, and that is, we did have, as some of you are aware, a couple of weeks ago, I guess it was the equivalent of spring break at Carl's Ice Cream. And we had police that came out, nobody is issuing ordinances, we're not in that situation, contrary to what some people were saying. We're, you know, we're, we're trying to just say, hey, use some common sense, I need you to disperse a little bit. And, you know, in, in some ways, as people, as we're going, we're not sure what's going to happen by Friday. I mean, you, you're not going to be able to submit this to Tim and Melissa Hahn and Billy by Friday and get it all approved in order for you to hire the number of people that you need to hire and bring in by Friday night, right? So, in, in some ways, we are suggesting, I think, to people that, as, we're willing to work with you, we may come after you afterwards if maybe we're uncomfortable with what you've done, but that, you know, we, we, we all want the same things. We want public safety, we want public commerce. I'm sorry, Tim, that was almost exactly what a great minds think alike, what Alderwoman Emig asked, what I was asked, we were asked earlier today. Tim, I'm turning it over to you.
Oh, you, you covered it, Mayor. And Alderwoman Emig, it's, it's, it's an internal discussion that a lot of players are going to be involved in this, you know, from fire and police chiefs have a component in this to see if they'll work. Public works, you know, as we increase our foot traffic, we got to keep the downtown clean. Also, there's a Melissa Hahn component, Bob Mart, Community Development, make sure that we're doing this right. And, and I think we'll get a rhythm to this after we get a few of these going, and then it'll catch on as far as the requests being consistent. And at the end of the day, I think Alderman Black said it, you know, we're, we're, we're going to find a way, and we're going to make this happen. Everybody's ready.
I, I agree. And I just, I also would suggest too, that it, it's an opportunity, right? Not to go back to what was, but we can really think, rethink how we use our public spaces. And that's exciting.
I, I'd like to echo what Councilmember Emig has said, because I think that there are some things, and you may not agree with me, this is just one idea that I've long supported, and that is vacating at least a 600 block, maybe the 500 and 600 blocks of Main Street and closing them off forever, make them public plazas. But whether or not that's a good idea or not, it's just things like that that we talked about before, but because other things have crowded it out, we've never really gotten back to talking about some things. Certainly within the city, we're doing things differently, and Tim is leading the charge to make sure that we're not going to be the same Bloomington pre-COVID that we are post-COVID. With that said, Councilmember Jamie Matthews?
Mayor, I just wanted to make sure that we, we had clarity. Something that you said earlier, and I'm not sure what you meant, but I don't actually see any reason why businesses can't be open this Friday. I think that we have the staff, the ability to get these approvals in and get everybody up and running safely, securely, and have that all done by Friday. Just the way you phrased it earlier, it sounded like you were saying, this isn't going to happen by Friday, get us your plans and we'll be in next week doing something.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify, no, meaning, I don't think there's any way that our staff is capable of taking care of everybody's plan in time by Friday. My thought was as, as long as, and I, I apologize, Jamie, as long as you're not overtly violating state law, let us know, give us your plan, we may not be able to get back to you. But if we find out that there's something that you're doing that we're uncomfortable with, we will let you know.
So you're talking almost a substantive approval?
By Friday. We, as it, consistent with state law, consistent with public safety, absolutely. And I apologize if anything I said, you know, would have implied anything else. Thank you.
I just wanted to make sure we were all on the same page, that our businesses have the ability to do amazing and awesome things, but most importantly, they need to open by Friday. So, you know, I'm, I'm open to every other conversation and having these talks, but let's not let things get in the way of making sure they can get at least basic functions up and running by Friday. That, that's my position on it, so.
And, and that's exactly mine too. Thank you, Jamie. I appreciate that. Councilmember Bowlin? Donna?
You're muted.
Oh, I strongly disagree with what Jamie is saying about moving forward quickly. It's not that I'm against businesses starting to open. It was actually my recommendation three weeks ago that we do all Fresco dining. And then, of course, the governor approved that. I want it done right, not rushed. And I don't want to have to pull things and, and address businesses. They need to come forward and talk to the city, can we do this? Can we do this? Present a plan. And then the, the permits are expedited. I don't think that the city should be imposing their ideas on the businesses, and I think it needs to be, well, I'll stop.
Thank you. I, I, I think we're probably all in agreement that the city should not be imposing itself. And I, I do want to give Alderwoman Bowlin credit. She and I had a conversation probably three weeks ago about having an El Fresco kind of event or situation in downtown Bloomington where many people would come together. And I was very enthusiastic, Donna, about what you had proposed. I very much appreciate that. I think that was a fantastic idea. And obviously, great minds must think alike, because we both liked it and others, you know, have, have, have come aboard. So, I, I, I think, well, if I'm not mistaken, Jamie, that I, I, as I understand, your position was not that the city would do anything, but that we would work with the ideas and creativity of the owners. I do see Councilmember Carrillo, who has a, a statement, and then we're going to have to vote on this item, because we're well beyond our time. Councilmember Carrillo? Jen?
Now I'm doing the thing where I'm talking while I'm muted. Contagious. So, I, so I was going to say, I think just for clarity, like, yes, businesses are allowed to reopen on their own, but no, they're not allowed to just take over the, like, sidewalk or street or parking spots or whatever. That does still have to go through the city, and that, those are the plans that we are talking about for folks who maybe aren't as familiar. I think we're talking a lot of, like, inside baseball stuff. And then I do think that it is a little bit of a balancing act. Totally understand the urgency of wanting to get things up and running, but also as somebody who lives in the immediate vicinity, and I don't mean to pick on Carl's, but, you know, even when we are in, like, the strictest form of lockdown, like, folks don't always follow the instructions. And, you know, that can, that can be nerve-wracking. So, you know, we have a tight rope to walk. We don't have, you know, an abundance of ICU beds in our community, so we also can't afford any big mistakes. So, let's move, let's move quickly, let's be as supportive of our business community as we possibly can be, but let's not. Yeah, let's, let's, let's be careful as we, as we move ahead.
Thank you. Councilmember Carrillo, your, as your points are certainly right on, and I think that that's what we're thinking of. You, you, you can't just close off a street, right? If, if you're going to close off, if you want to close off a street, you, you're going to have to kind of talk to us, right? So, so there are some things that obviously are going to be necessary. At this point, I'd like to entertain him to see if I could, I have a motion on 10B?
Mayor? We do actually have a motion on the table.
Oh, did I already do that?
Yep, we do. And I just want to clarify the motion with Councilmember Bray and Councilmember Bowlin, that you are motioning for approval of the modified emergency ordinance that City Manager Gleason was discussing.
Okay, thank you very much. If you would call the roll now.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Bray. Thanks for, I had forgotten that you'd already made that motion. But we've kind of, I, I didn't pay as close attention to that five-minute timeframe as I should have. Madam Clerk, I'll roll.
Sorry, and Councilmember Bowlin, you were in agreement as well for the modified?
Yes.
Okay, thanks, sorry. Okay, Councilmember Matthew?
Yes.
Councilmember Bowlin?
Yes.
Councilmember Milowamway?
Yes.
Councilmember Emig?
Yes.
Councilmember Painter?
Yes.
Councilmember Carrillo?
Yes.
Councilmember Black?
Yes.
Councilmember Crable?
Yes.
Councilmember Bray?
Yes.
There are no nays to announce, Madam Clerk. That's our last action item of the night. We do have a finance director report, and I'm going to go ahead and turn this over so he doesn't feel neglected to our City Manager, Mr. Gleason.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm going to save some of my budget comments under City Managers' discussion. Scott, I'll send it to you right now.
Thank you very much, Tim. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Actually, wanted to spend a couple of minutes recapping some of the processes we went through related to the projections for the remainder of '20 and '21, given the COVID-19 effects it's going to have on our financials. So, just briefly, we went through the entire general fund budget, all the accounts, and assigned them a probable reduction related to the shelter in place. And then, for '20, we assumed a month and a half of sheltering. So, for examples, you know, we, we reduced sales taxes by 50%, locomotor fuel tax 75%, hotel motel 90%, video gaming was easy, that was 100% reduction. We went through all the parks, you know, zoo, ICE, BCPA, we took out the revenue, but we left in some of the seasonal activity. We weren't sure when the shelter in place was going to get lifted. So, in order to ramp up and have those parks programs ready to go live, you know, by summer, we were assuming that we might have some seasonal salaries in, in '20. Well, that didn't happen. But, you know, a month ago, it seems like a long time ago, we were assuming there was going to be about a $2 million net hit to 2020 related to that activity, and then specifically to income taxes, given the due date was pushed out to July 15th from the normal date. We were assuming that there was going to be about $700,000 that was going to get pushed out into the 2021 fiscal year, because the monies were going to be received beyond the period that we could recognize them for revenue. So, that was a process we went through '20. For '21, we used the same assumptions on an account-by-account basis. And then, if you recall, we did three scenarios. We did a Bay First Sheltering, a June First Shelter Lift, excuse me, and July First Shelter Lift. And then, on top of that, we applied a recessionary tail for the remainder of the years, and we came up with eight and a half percent recessionary hit that we applied to the remainder of the year, given the shelter date. And with that, you know, scenario number one for '21 was a $5 million hit related to COVID-19, and then it went up to two and two and a half million dollars per month thereafter. So, that was the projections we arrived at about a little over a month and a half ago, getting ready for that presentation, I believe it was on April 20. So, that brings us today. Can we go to the next slide, please? For consistency, I, I want to go through the same set of slides that we typically do. I, I've altered them a little bit, I've taken out some columns just so that they're a little larger. But I want to highlight, you know, each month, we go through this major tax revenue exhibit, and it's for revenues that have been received through the end of the month that we're discussing. So, these revenues have been received through April 30. You can see it off to the right column. We have revenues still remaining to be reflected in our financials. Sales tax, there's a two-month delay, all of our local taxes, they're due by the 25th of the following month, so all the April tax returns and taxes are due, were due yesterday. And then it takes a couple of weeks for us to compile those and have the numbers done. So, this time next month, we're going to have some pretty solid numbers. But typically, I run through the budget, the actual, for this slide, but for tonight, I'm going to be mentioning some of the activity that has come in, in May, and, and really kind of give an idea of where we are, just giving that activity and, and discussing an adjustment to our projections. I'm going to have to, this, so, I want to pick two line items just to kind of highlight what we did and the effects versus budget and versus the projection. There's still a lot of things in motion, expense-wise and revenues, but, but some things have been finalized, and some things we know are going to do better now than what we had projected. I've been talking a lot about food and beverage. You can see on your screen that the budget to actual year-to-date, it's $156,000 higher than year-to-date budget. Well, last month, it was $268,000 higher. So, that's a decrease of $113,000. But when we did our projection a month and a half ago, getting, getting ready for the, the council discussion for the '21 budget and the remainder of '20, we took food and beverage down by $182,000. So, it came in $70,000 better for March. And we had, we had a couple of other instances like that. I'll talk about hotel motel. You can see that it's, it's $78,000 higher than year-to-date budget. Last month, it was $136,000 better, so it came down 58,000. But our projection showed it coming down by $96,000 because of the assumptions we used at the time, just thinking that all the travel is going to be shutting down. So, hotel motel came in $38,000 better. Now, on top of that, we had a couple of very material, pleasant surprises. I just mentioned income taxes. Income taxes, I'm going to lump replacement tax into that as well, because that's, that's a formal corporate income tax. We had projected $700,000 of that being moved out to next year. Well, apparently, and, and it's just an assumption in our, on our part in finance, is that a lot of taxes had come in before that deadline had gotten moved out, because income tax and replacement, replacement tax had finalized a year $400,000 better than our COVID projection. So, a very material increase. You know, we, we're just talking about $3 million. It was $2.7 billion related to COVID. We had an original $300,000 net loss projected for 2020. So, we are at $3 million a month and a half. So we are at $3 million a month and a half ago. You know, $400,000 better in projection, uh, so far through May, just related to income tax. The other very material pleasant surprise was ambulance fees. Now that's not listed on this exhibit. It's not a major tax revenue. Um, the chief more had, um, enrolled the, the city in a, a new program. It was a supplemental Medicaid for a ground emergency. Um, now, the, some of the, the increase was, I think, related to a catch up billing too. But ambulance fees finalized the year $400,000 better than our projection for COVID. So another very significant increase. So we, you know, we had a couple of other items. I've mentioned that, um, I think last month, I, I did mention, uh, pack, uh, prepared liquor, prepackaged liquor, um, $30,000 higher than our projection. Uh, a couple of other ones, when you start adding those small ones up, they, they add up, uh, pretty quickly. So as of today, we're, we're comfortable, um, increasing the COVID projection for revenues up by a million dollars. Now, sales taxes, um, gonna be coming in, um, I'm thinking maybe later next week, um, from the state. So that's still a big wild card, but at, at this point in time, we're comfortable increasing our revenue projection by a million dollars. Next slide, please. So this, this exhibit, I, I've, I've trimmed, slimmed it down a little bit so it's easier to see. I'm going to be focusing on the projected year income as I have for the last couple of months. I've, I've explained, you know, we're, we're bumping up the revenue projection, uh, the prior month. You know, it was 103 something. This month we got 104.9. You can see in total revenue. And then expenses, some of our expenses, I mean, most of them are still in motion, motion, but a lot of them have been pretty finalized. Salaries, salaries are coming in lower than our projection from a month and a half ago. And as I, I mentioned a couple of minutes ago, we had included seasonal expense in our projection. At that time, we did not know the, um, shelter in place was gonna get extended another month. We wanted to be ultra, that's a term, um, conservative. So seasonals, um, we basically didn't hire those seasonals that we had put into the projection. So a significant reduction there. Uh, there was another large component. We had, uh, police overtime came in about $179,000 lower than expected. So, um, our salaries line is about $400,000 lower than what we projected a month and a half ago due to those two, um, major components. And then commodities, we've taken that down, um, a little bit as well. We had supplies related to parks. We had, excuse me, while I bring up my, my notes, um, some fleet reductions. There's, there's a, a significant, um, underage in electric, um, fees. I'm not sure exactly what the nature of that is, but all those things add up so that we've, at this point in time, taken, um, expenses down from our production about $500,000. So you can see down at the bottom, um, we have our net projection now at 1.5 million versus the $3 million we had a month ago. And again, really just related to three to four very material items. The income tax that came in way above what we'd anticipated. We anticipated a, a big hit there because of the, uh, the, uh, deadline being moved out to July, the ambulance fees, and then the reductions in salaries and commodities. So, uh, I wanted to make a couple of comments that, um, you know, we have swings, material swings, uh, between light items during the year. Now those just kind of get blended into our projection. You know, when we have a swing like that at year end, they're a little bit more evident when you're seeing it, um, an amount dial up or down, but a $1.5 million change, you know, out of a $110 million budget. You know, that's, that's approximately, that's less than 1%. And again, trying to be very, very conservative with our estimates and our projections when we were doing that COVID initial, um, look to the future, you know, crystal ball in it. Next month, we're gonna have a full month of shelter financials. It's gonna give us a very good indication of, of, um, what we can expect to see going forward. Now, you know, we're gonna have this blend of, you know, retail and restaurants being able to partially open. So we're gonna have to apply some of that there. Um, but we're gonna give that our best shot and run some analysis and models on that. Um, the last comment I would like to make is, um, while this, this is a very positive, um, adjustment to our projection, when we did those projections a month and a half ago, or a month ago, we, um, had a backup plan, a FY21 backup plan for the, for the first scenario, the May first lifting. And so we, um, we accumulated a list, um, to, to match the $5 million deficit that we were projecting. Well, obviously since then, the, uh, shelter in place has been extended a month. So this, uh, $1.5 million development, positive development now will help offset those, that additional $2 million that we're expecting, um, from hitting, as a hit related to the extension of the shelter in place. Next slide, please. Enterprise funds, um, the, the revenues typically go right down to the bottom line here. Water, sewer, storm, solid waste, uh, very consistent throughout the year. I've mentioned before, we, we misbudgeted sewers. So that's why it's been trending under the entire year. Uh, golf, you can see, um, the comparison to, um, prior year, two, almost 2.1 million for FY19 versus year to date, actual 1.7 million. Obviously, uh, the, the closure of the golf courses had a very material effect on that. But golf was, um, struggling prior to that. Uh, we've, we've discussed that it will be needing a subsidy for the year. We'll be, uh, finalizing those budget amendments once the year's closed out. And then we'll, we'll be expecting to have to do a subsidy for the coming year as well. For the arena, um, I've added a line under the ending fund balance. It's called trans, transferred operating subsidy. Uh, I just wanted to highlight that, you know, the total year to date gain loss of the 336,000. I, I, I think everyone is aware that the arena operates at a greater loss than that. So I wanted to highlight that we do subsidize both the facility maintenance and obviously the entertainment, the venue works, uh, side of things. Uh, their, uh, annual loss is contractually capped at 350,000. And, and that's, uh, where it's coming in at for the year. You know, given the, the announcements that have been made about that, it's, it's right where we, uh, contractually kept it at anyway. Um, a couple of other closing comments, uh, one, one about the state budget. Uh, Tim's gonna be commenting on a couple of, of positive things, but one positive thing I want to note is the local government distributive fund. Um, that's where the income tax flows through. The state has actually been holding back 5% from us on that. Um, and that's, you know, on a, on a normal year without COVID, you know, we had budgeted $8 million in income tax for the year. So by removing that 5%, um, we should pick up somewhere between 300 and $400,000 um, from that. So a, a very positive surprise out of the, um, legislature from this weekend. Um, we'll take any news like that, that, that we can get. So, um, I guess in closing, summary is, um, positive developments of the last 30 days related to 20. You know, we have a lot of things still in motion, um, waiting for that first full month of sheltering, uh, financials to come in so we can get a real good, uh, grip on or handle on that, that effect, ongoing effect potentially. And, um, once again, you know, next month, while things won't be finalized, obviously the audit goes on for quite some time and invoices continue to flow in from vendors. We should have a pretty good indication though of how revenues are gonna end the year and, and a fairly good indication of expenses as well. Um, with that, I'll, I'll take any questions.
Any questions, Scott? Okay, I'm having trouble seeing questions here.
Uh, Mayor, we do have councilmember Crable with his hand up.
Councilmember Crable, then, thank you. Oh, oh, I'm back. Okay, thanks, councilmember Crable.
Uh, yeah, Scott, I mean, uh, this is, uh, very good news. And I think it goes, it speaks for, uh, the sound fiscal management led by you and, and, and Tim and your staff. So really, uh, appreciate that, planning ahead, uh, planning for the worst and hoping for the best. We've got some best, uh, uh, stuff here tonight. Um, one question I had was, in, in looking at expenses, um, it seemed like benefits. Um, there was an increased cost beyond the budget. Uh, what's that related to?
That's primarily related to the sickly buyback.
Okay.
Policy that was undertaken. So those are the accelerated payments, uh, for the year. So a strategic decision by council, the city and the council to address, you know, the, the coming year's, uh, expenses.
Thank, and, and then, um, going back to, I think, uh, page three of your slide. I, I think what, what it says is that, uh, at the end of 2020, uh, were, uh, the, uh, anticipated fund balance is going to be, uh, 21,623,000. Am I reading that right?
Yeah, yes, that's, that's considering, um, all things being equal through the remainder of the year with the $1.5 million, net activity lost.
Okay. And then just one final question or just a comment, um, uh, just to note, I think in the, um, accounts payable for, uh, uh, this week, uh, for the arena, I, I think we did make our, our loan payment, right, of over a million dollars?
For the bonds?
Yeah.
Yes. Yeah, we, we did. All, all of our bonds are basically on a two times a year schedule, June and December. So yeah, I think our, our, our total bond payments on this council was approximately 3.6 million.
Okay. Hey, thanks, Scott.
You're welcome.
Thank you very much. We're gonna go ahead and, uh, turn to our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Uh, I do have a couple of items. I, I've trimmed a fair amount. I know that, uh, with the township meeting, we're pushing, uh, three hours plus, uh, at this point. So I'll make this quick. But I've got some really good stuff. Uh, under the COVID comments, uh, just wanted to share that effective, uh, June 1st. We've talked about, uh, what's going to occur in the community in phase three. Well, with the city facilities, uh, those, uh, will have access of by appointment only. Uh, from day one, uh, in this pandemic, uh, we have, uh, still maintain the, uh, public, uh, facing service that the employees, uh, are providing, uh, nearly a hundred percent. And that is at the arena, uh, arena windows. Uh, so that's going to occur. Uh, I'm sorry, increase, uh, and will continue. But the public, uh, that has business within a city facility, that will be, uh, by appointment only. Uh, staff will, uh, meet and then, uh, uh, go to, uh, an area to, uh, conduct the meeting. Also, as far as the employees, and there's about 200 plus, uh, that are working from home. Uh, going to, uh, just, uh, have 50%, no more than that, uh, during the entire month of June. That's consistent with the Department of Commerce and Economic Opportunity guidelines that they, uh, released, uh, over the past couple of days. We do share occupancy in the government center, uh, obviously, uh, with the county. They're taking a little bit different approach, uh, with some of the, uh, elected offices, uh, that they've got. And, uh, that's something that, uh, we're working with the Public Building Commission, uh, as a, uh, dual tenant uh, of that building to figure out, uh, what that's gonna look like through, uh, June. Uh, safety is the priority. Uh, you know, in this pandemic, uh, June 1st really is no different than May 1st or April 1st. Uh, we don't have a vaccine. We don't have an antibiotic. Uh, but we're smarter about all of this, which is why the allowances on the business side that we had talked about previously are now allowed. Uh, but we're taking a very precautionary, uh, pathway, uh, as far as our city facilities. Another, uh, COVID related item, and this is gonna be a June 8th, uh, agenda item for council. And it's already been talked about publicly, uh, but as a result of this pandemic, uh, we've agreed to terms with, uh, venue works to, uh, end the, uh, agreement that would have ended June of 2021. So a full year, uh, sooner than expected. Uh, and much like, uh, I think it was, uh, Alderwoman Carrillo that talked about the opportunities in COVID. I know others have talked about that as well. Uh, but this is one that, uh, given the circumstances with the pandemic, uh, mutually agreeing to end the relationship with, uh, venue works, who has been a valued partner. Uh, it, uh, it also marks, uh, an opportunity for us to explore what are the possibilities as we look at that arena? Shifting gears, uh, non-COVID, uh, we have, uh, farmer's market that, uh, business closed, I think at five o'clock today. And we have 150 plus orders. Uh, those, uh, continue to be extremely, uh, strong. And, uh, look forward to, uh, later in the month of June, opening that up in a safe way in the downtown again. But as this thing moves forward, thanks, Craig. Uh, as this thing moves forward, we're gonna continue with the, uh, existing online order. And then the pickup on the, uh, uh, west side of the arena. Uh, census 2020, uh, can't miss this one? Okay, you're moving on me. Is that you or Craig? Okay, uh, census 2020. Now, one thing that I wanted to share with everybody, while we are not done, please encourage everybody to do this. But I want to share with everybody that, uh, we have the, currently, we have the second highest, uh, return rate on completing the census. And I don't know if you guys noticed this, but when, uh, Katie Simpson, our city planner, uh, was, uh, assisting Kevin Cothee with the presentation, the public hearing, she had her census 2020 shirt on. So we're not done by any means, but we are doing extremely well. And that's something, uh, we're sharing with the community and, uh, definitely a thumbs up. And there's no reason why we can't be first. So let's, uh, continue that. Uh, O'Neil Pool, just a quick update. Uh, we've got an RFP that's in, uh, in the works, uh, to, uh, demo the property as we had commented to, uh, before. And, uh, the last item, and this is a biggie, uh, and I'm excited about it. Uh, Scott mentioned, uh, LDBG, uh, that they have reduced, eliminated 5%, which for us is about $400,000. But I just got an email. It was over the weekend because our general assembly was in session on the House side until like 12:30 in the morning, uh, on Friday evening, Saturday morning, and I think the Senate side until like 2 AM. Our, our, our local elected, uh, delivered a huge home run for the city of Bloomington. Were mentioned in the current state budget six different times. So you've got Senator Bill Brady, Senator, uh, Jason Barrettman, especially, uh, Representative Dan Brady. And we have Representative, uh, Keith Summer. Uh, were mentioned, like I said, six different times. Five of those times are under the, uh, Build Illinois Bond Fund. And, uh, that's, we have an appropriated amount of $1.75 million for, uh, infrastructure improvements. And then the biggie, uh, under the, uh, uh, Rebuild Illinois Projects Fund, uh, to the Illinois Arts Council, uh, for a grant, uh, to the Friends of Bloomington Performing Arts Center for Permanent Improvement, uh, which is the, uh, Creativity Center. $2 million have been, uh, appropriated to this. So a lot of credit goes to our lobbyist Julie Curry, uh, who's been very, uh, involved and engaged. Uh, but we have got, uh, some excellent, uh, representatives, uh, that are taking care of us at the city of Bloomington. And I planned on sending, uh, of, you know, a formal thank you letter to, uh, Senator Bill Brady, Senator Jason Barrettman, Representative Dan Brady and Representative, uh, Keith Summer. So that's my news for the night. Thank you.
Great news. Thank you very much, uh, city manager Gleason, and we're all very, very happy about that.
Can I ask, uh, Tim a COVID related question?
Uh, you can do that during your automatic comments.
Okay.
Usually open, we don't usually open up, uh, a, a city manager or mayoral discussion to Q and A. Cause God knows how long we'd be here. Um, but anyway, uh, just, and, and it'll be fast because all I just want to do is to, once again, thank, uh, and, uh, wish a one, a belated eight days after the fact birthday to Jen Carrillo. And I do want to thank councilmember Bolan again for the discussion we had weeks ago on El Fresco Dining in downtown, which, uh, uh, as I say, great minds think alike. That's all I have. So council members, I'm gonna go ahead and start with, uh, councilmember Black since, uh, he had the first question, and then I'm gonna move to councilmember Crable.
Thank you. And this question is for, for Tim. Um, you know, I, I saw that the, the county is voting on a reopen plan. I, I, I'm having a hard time understanding what it is or what it means. I'm not sure that they have, uh, made that clear either. Have, have you been in talks with Bill over there or anybody around, around that, that reopen plan?
It's, uh, Camille Rodriguez is the county administrator.
Oh, yeah, sorry. Yeah.
No, uh, she, uh, she and I and, uh, the, uh, city manager Pam Reese. She she and I and the city manager Pam Reese talk often. I don't know that I've got an answer for you, Alderman Black, and I'm not sure that Camille would maybe reaching out to your counterparts of the county.
Yeah, okay, because I don't know what it means for for us.
Yeah, just if I could interject, Scott, I have had quite a few conversations and was in on the, you know, in a sense, the mayors and two county board chairs that were involved in the HOI heart of Illinois subregion. And most of the county board members that were quoted in the paper don't know what they're talking about. Let's put it that way. Chuck Erickson, for example, who said that both Mayor Artis and I were in favor of doing whatever we needed to do in spite of whatever the state did, they're just inaccurate. So there's a lot of inaccuracies. I know that's going to come as a shock to you for someone who's in the county board, myself included, being on the county board. I can't imagine that the county would ever get things wrong. But it's it's not a good news source. Let me just put it that way.
Perhaps Tim and some city managers update, whenever that passes or doesn't pass, there can be some feedback from staff about what that means to us, if anything, because I have no idea if it's a practical bill resolution or whatever or not. So, you know, I'm just curious about what that means because I'm certainly getting questions about it.
And they also, they don't have, they don't have home rule. The normal can do a heck of a lot more than the county can, other than make headlines and talk.
Yes.
So anyway, let's see, I have, were you done? I'm sorry, Scott.
Just that I did find it, it was in June of 2013, only Wesley did not pay for the vacation.
Councilmember Crable, Milliwamway, and Bowlin.
Thank you, Mayor. Just real quickly, I'm having another virtual town hall this coming Monday, June 1st at 6 PM. And anyone's invited. You don't have to be in Ward 8. I have, I'm doing it by Zoom, so I have a Facebook invite and my page is Jeff Crable, Bloomington City Council, Ward 8. And then if you, if you, you can also email me with, and I can send you the Zoom information at jcrable@citybloom.org. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you so much. Councilmember Milliwamway and then Bowlin.
Yeah, this was just a question for for Tim, so about the the money that's been appropriated for the city of Bloomington and the state budget. While I'm very excited, I know that in in the past, it has taken a little bit of time to put the money to be released. So I was just kind of curious, especially given COVID, what your your thoughts are on when we could see a release of the funds.
And Alderman Milliwamway, you're spot on. You know, just because the money is appropriated doesn't mean that we're going to see a check written a month from now. It will take some time, continued advocacy, and then even a lot more detail on the type of infrastructure use this $1.75 million can be used for. So more detail to come, but the fact that it's plugged into the state budget is extremely encouraging. And I know that we've got four state representatives that are very much on top of it.
Okay, thank you. And if there's anything we can do as council members, please feel free to let us know.
Yes.
Thank you. Councilmember Bowlin, last but not least.
Yes, I hope Kevin Cothe is still on on Zoom here because I would like to thank him for the sidewalk work that's going on on West Oakland. I'm not sure which ward it's in, but it's between Center and Morris, I believe. So keep that up. And to answer Scott's question about the COVID discussion, basically, the Health Department is the one that is in control of that kind of information. And they need to be included in the discussion. I mean, the county can't go off and do what their, you know, what they want to do and the city can't. The Health Department is the one that has to direct it all. And I think that they might be waiting on the Health Department's plan.
I look forward to that, too.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Just FYI, the the McLean County and Peoria Health Departments were were part of the conversations that the Central Illinois mayors and the two county board chairs have had over the last several weeks. And I think what was the Peoria County Health Department, whose head is an epidemiologist who had led some of the kind of fact-based information that suggested we ought to be a separate entity. That's that's not directly related to what you've mentioned, Donna, but just FYI. And, oh, Councilmember Correo.
Oh, I don't think there's anybody else on stack to talk. I was just going to motion to adjourn.
That would be very welcome at this point. Motion by Councilmember Correo, is there a second? I see, I see a hand. It's waving. Oh, oh.
Can't wait to get out of here.
That's right.
All right.
Second by Councilmember Bowlin. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And have a wonderful end of May to everybody, and I will talk to you soon. Take care.
Bye, everyone. Thank you.
Bye-bye.
Bye. Be safe, be well.